Still, I'm like this.
Yes.
I can tell him to go ahead and address something.
Just tell him, I feel, I feel pretty sick with Bishop next to me.
Whichever you want. Okay, I'll say that.
But Brett is, Brett is just so, he's always so energetic and has some cool. I'm not happy to clap with him, probably, but I can have to say that, because I like that picture.
Beautiful. I'll say, I'll tell, um.
We're good, Mayor.
All right, we'll call this meeting to order. We have our streaming up and going now and technicals. So, thank you, everyone, for that couple of minutes wait. Welcome, everybody. My name is Mayor Carolyn Lundberg, and I'll be presiding this evening here on Monday, November 3rd, 2025, at 5:15 PM in the Linden City Chambers. We will first begin with an invocation provided by Councilmember Steve Stewart, and then we will have our Pledge of Allegiance led by Officer Harmon.
Our Father in Heaven, we thank thee for this beautiful day, for this time of year in which we have to express gratitude, and we are thankful for all that we have, for this great country we live in and this great city. We are thankful for all who serve. We're grateful for our first responders. Pray that you bless them with peace and safety. Father, we pray that we might have peace and, and common sense prevail in our community and in our nation. We pray that thou would bless us tonight to exhibit fairness and be able to be open-minded and, and to be able to listen to all that is occurring, and grateful for all those who will present. We say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mayor Pete, after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, everyone. We'll now have our roll call, and I'd just like to acknowledge that Councilmember Broderick is, is excused this evening, and, but we do have a quorum, so I'll just start here on my left. Thank you.
Steve Stewart, present.
Jake Hoyt, present.
Carolyn Lundberg, present.
Cole Hooley, present.
Lincoln Jacobs, present.
Okay, wonderful. That takes us to item number two. If you'd like to follow along the agenda this evening, those are at the, uh, the doorway there to, and they are also online. Uh, so we'll then go on next to our presentations and announcements. We have a couple, uh, we're excited to acknowledge, uh, a special employee this evening, and I'll invite those that are going to bring them forward and present now.
Officer Jamison, we're gonna make you come up here, will ya?
Sorry, you have to come up. Don't be shy.
Well, this is our, our third quarter employee recognition, and grateful that Brandon's here. And let me read, uh, this was something that a coworker wrote and submitted on, on Brandon's behalf. Brandon has done extensive work to restart the drone program for Linden Police Department. He has acquired funding to assist with the expenses of new equipment, including several thousand dollars in grant money. He attended training and became licensed and certified as a drone pilot. He continues to pursue training to improve his skills and knowledge of drone equipment, software, and specific ways a drone can benefit our department. He is networking with outside agencies and is committed to ongoing training. Brandon continues to hone his skills, further develop the program for the benefit of our department and the City of Linden. I commend his passion for, for this program and feel he should be recognized for the work he has performed to get it off the ground. That was a bad dad joke right there, so. Brandon also recently spotted a vehicle that was broadcast in a countywide attempt to locate of a wanted person. This person was wanted for several alleged felonies in Utah, as well as multiple extraditable warrants from the, from states outside of Utah. Brandon was off duty, driving home, help, after helping with a citizen training. He recognized the described vehicle ahead of him in traffic. He was able to coordinate a high-risk traffic stop on, with on-duty officers, which enabled the safe arrest of the alleged predator. Brandon is doing a phenomenal job for our police department and Linden City. So, we want to recognize Brandon with a $50 gift certificate to Cabela's and a handshake, man. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Officer Jamison. We really appreciate you going the extra mile, and, and especially with that drone technology, it's been an incredible game changer. There's actually a, a, a multi-community, potentially multi-state crime ring that was just apprehended here in Linden that probably have to the tune of hundreds of thousands, maybe more, thanks to that drone. So, it's pretty incredible. So, thank you so much. Let's give him another round of applause. Enjoy that gift certificate. All right, that brings us now to any further announcements from council members outside of your reports or staff? Okay, wonderful. We'll move on to item number three. This is our open session for public comment, and we'd like to open this time for up to three-minute comment period for the council. No action can be taken during co, open comment, but we are here to listen. For anything that is not on our agenda this evening, you're welcome to come forward and.
Are you gonna have public comments about the Thornton Park?
Public comment about the park?
Will you have public comments about the Thornton Park later on?
You know, tonight is a presentation. Um, there's no decisions being made on that. It's just a presentation of some concepts. Uh, perhaps there, yeah, there could potentially be some commentary there.
Better safe than sorry.
My name's Sandra Christensen, and I live on Lakeview Road. And I've looked at this concept for the Thornton Park with some of my neighbors, and, and some of the concerns were, as that road goes through, will there just be, uh, will there be a two-way stop? Will there be a four-way stop? Has that been taken into consideration where Fourth West and Lakeview will have an intersection instead of just a T there? And then also, it seems like there's very minimal parking spaces. If you've got even two teams practicing soccer, or you may have four teams playing soccer, and then you've got the, the pickleball and the playground, it seems like, and then there are their, the picnic pavilions. There's just not enough parking. So, that was a big concern. Another concern of one of my neighbors was, that's gonna be a fairly high-traffic road, and the playground's pretty close to that high-traffic road. So, um, will there be some kind of fencing or something to kind of secure that playground area for safety from the, the road? So, those were kind of the concerns in talking with some of the people in the neighborhood, and so I just wanted to bring those up.
Thank you. That park is a possible proposed park. It's not even designated for sure that it'll all be a park, or what, we're just, it's a brainstorm by the, um, consulting firm. So, we'll be looking at that. Thank you for those comments. All right, any other comments?
We supposed to put our name down?
Yes, please. Thank you.
I'm Doug Christensen. I also live on Lakeview Road.
Welcome.
Thank you. Um, I'd share some of the same concerns that Sandra does. Um, there's no parking on, uh, concerning the park, we, we like the idea of the park. I, I'd be just in favor of the park. That's just fine. That's better than building residential or whatever. But there's no parking on the side where the proposed soccer fields are. And there's no designated crosswalks anywhere. And we'd be concerned about the traffic on Lakeview Road not having a stop sign. And anyone that's lived there very long is gonna be used to just driving straight through there. So, it, the control of that intersection would need to be, regardless of what the development is, needs to be a four-way stop, or the traffic on, uh, Fourth North or Fourth West needs to stop. Just for safety, just our observation, living there as long as we have. We'll certainly have a lot of traffic coming from the commercial developments on, uh, is it Second or, I don't know, or the next street south.
Very good. Yeah, I'm, I'm sure the engineers will review all that.
They're gonna go to that intersection, so it's gonna be a, a, an adjustment in traffic. And so that would be our concern, is the safety aspects, so.
Great comments. Thank you.
As we, as we develop our little city, let's do it safely. Thank you.
Yes, please state your name, and then you can sign out as you're leaving, so.
Minta Valentine, good to see you guys. Really excited about this look of park. I think it's gonna be wonderful for Linden City. I think being the center, I love that. I do share some of the same concerns because of that dang, um, reception center. We still have parking issues all the time, constantly. Is that road, what, what are the thoughts of that road with Gilman Lane? Are they, are you gonna close it off? Um, is that gonna be a through fare? It still is one of those concerns, like, people are walking down that in the middle of the night. And so I just wonder, opening that up, are we gonna have more problems? Where are they gonna park? Are they gonna park on that road? Is that gonna cause access, something like that? And I know that's, part of it's separate, but part of it's not because it's opening that road right there to it. So, that's just something, as we're looking at doing that, how, what's gonna happen there, so.
Yeah, it's been part of the conversation for sure.
Perfect.
Thank you, Minta.
Thank you.
I'm on the committee that's been part of this master planning. It's, it is a very high-level plan at this point. I hope you guys aren't expecting the park next week or, or this spring, but. But I would also add that, that, that the reception center and the parking issues have been conscious and part, a big part of those, not a big part, but a part of those conversations, those, you know, and, and so we'll present this later on. And, and again, it is a very, it is a master plan, a high-level plan. But, but we have kept that in mind as we've put roads in certain locations, and so anyways.
Perfect.
But because it is so far out, for all three of you, if there's concerns after it's been presented, there's still a lot of time for us to, hey, maybe the crosswalks should go here and here. These gentlemen here are, they, who are here today to present, um, sought out a lot of public opinion. And sometimes it's really hard for us to get people to say, this is what I think. And so we are very, very open to.
This is the first stab.
The public, and, and so we're excited that you're involved now. We, we obviously have your information. We know you. And, and so we will try to involve you as we fine-tune, hey, the crosswalk should go here, or the stop sign should go here. So, appreciate you being involved.
Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right, any other comments? All right, we'll move on then to item number four. This is our council reports. And go ahead, take it away, Councilmember Stewart.
I would just like to first thank our Recreation Department for the Halloween Spooktacular. It was spectacular. And I appreciate the fact that our youth council was allowed to be involved. They started with it last year, and this year it was a little more refined, and I think they enjoyed it a lot more. So, really grateful for Heath and Alan, McKendra, Tracy, and so many others that I'd love to say their names, but don't have everybody involved, so you pass that on.
Did you see your, did you see your headstones?
Yes.
Shocking, shocking to see my own headstone, and I loved it. My kids were freaking out. So, so cool.
Uh, also, I gave a shout-out last time to Jamie Jensen for all of her work with our senior program, but I also would like to give a shout-out for her connection to the youth council. She has, as she works with Linden Cares, with our Communities That Care program, and I hope I'm not stepping on Cole's toes here, but, um, she has reached out to us with, with information that's pertaining to youth that she's received, and, uh, including Supporting Young Minds, which is a Mental Health America program that allows for our youth to kind of be involved in, in the things that are going on around them with their own peers. And, and just wanted to acknowledge that, that that is also happening, and appreciate Jamie's efforts there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, a couple, a couple of things to report as I wasn't at the last meeting. Did also have an opportunity to attend the Linden Cares luncheon, um, for community leaders. I loved that. Good, good opportunity to rub shoulders with some great nonprofits, uh, folks helping in that Linden Cares effort. We, I have an email from the chief. I appreciate him keeping me apprised of, of a lot of what's going on there in, in the PD. A couple of things of note. We are having a mock drill on November 8th for, for CERT. We'll have multiple CERT members from the neighboring cities in attendance. A, a lot of unique, uh, every, every time chief sends me something, there's so many different, unique, uh, things that the, that our, that our PD are working on, that they shield us from, that we don't hear about. And so, just a, just a shout-out to them. I appreciate all that they're, that they're doing. Had a conversation today with the president of the PG Linden Chamber of Commerce. He is running for mayor of Pleasant Grove, and, um, may, it may or may not create a potential conflict of interest there. He's obviously been serving as, as a city council member, and so, uh, we'll watch that election closely tomorrow night, and, and maybe that may merit a conversation, um, as he may or may not step down if he wins. And so, anyway, something to be conscious of, uh, as that election happens tomorrow.
The, the Tree Board recently met, and they're reviewing the recommendations for the 700 North area. It's amazing to hear these folks talk about trees. I'm learning so much about trees. I can't even pronounce these species. Like, they're like, this would be a great one, and I'm like, sounds great. It's really impressive what they're talking about. So, they're updating those. Um, some things have already been mentioned about CTC. They're doing great and have their programming up. The Historic Commission is, uh, working on the tree lighting coming up, and it will be slightly, I mean, same spirit, slightly different, trying to accommodate different feedback from years past. And then the inter-local, we're still working together, finalizing, um, sort of a data transfer, if you will, to the board once they are installed. So, just as a reminder, to get your ballots in, tomorrow's the, the last day, so there's a drop box just outside here.
Can't go in the regular mail.
Yeah, it's too late for the regular mail at this point, but you can put it in the drop box, um, today and tomorrow, up until, I think, eight is the cutoff to, to get things in. That's what I have.
Thank you.
Echo the comment about the Halloween Spooktacular and the headstone. I just, that was awesome. You got my convertible, you got my pickleball. It was, captured it all in one, in one headstone. Um, a little bit of data on that. According to Heath, we had 35 trunks. I admit, I did not stand in the long lines to go to all of the trunks, so I didn't count them. It sure felt like there was a lot more, but his data shows 35 trunks, an estimated 2,500 attended, and sponsorship of $1,850. So, and the staff, you just do such a great job. Everybody loves it. Everybody loves it. Pirate Ship is being rebuilt and painted. Uh, we have a hockey clinic that is next Wednesday. And I know you're all gonna be jealous about this, but Wednesday, the 12th, I am heading to WasteCon, where I will rub shoulders with the great trash people of the United States. And, uh, I'm, I'm excited. The thing is, I really am excited.
That's not, that's not being sarcastic.
Oh, that's all that I have.
Thank you so much, Lincoln. Um, I'm, so I just wanted to double-check with Parks and Rec, the Turkey Trot event. I was looking on the city newsletter. I'm not sure I caught a date for that. Do you know it off the top of your head?
Yes, it is the 22nd. It's on the website as well. If that didn't get in, my apologies, but it is on the website, and registration's over there.
All right, wonderful. Um, our, our city puts together a wonderful newsletter every month, and you, it doesn't come in the mail, but you can opt-in to receive it via email or just log into thecitylinden.gov and find it there. So, tons of information on there, and lots of upcoming events every single month that are really wonderful, as the council has reported. So, I'll just turn it over to our city administrator on what he would like to report.
Thanks, Mayor. The only, uh, thing that I wanted to bring up that's not already on there, we are required to meet as a Board of Canvasers, the city council, and approve the final tally of votes that the county will send us. It's, it's, um, pretty straightforward. They send us a sheet that says, here's how many we received and who voted for what, and we have to agree that that's correct. And so, um, we need a date to meet and do that. The Canvas votes from the county will come no later than November 18th at noon. And then we were gonna ask if you wanted to meet just a quick individual meeting during that week, kind of a lunch or daytime. This would take 15 minutes. Or we could move the council meeting that is on the 17th to another night, so we don't have to have a second meeting. So, I just wanted to get your feedback on that.
How busy is the agenda looking for the 17th?
We have a fair amount, yeah.
So, that's a question. Would you all like to just meet one time? Move it from Monday to another day that week? Are you available, or just keep it Monday and then do a quick certification?
We could do it at the Turkey Trot.
I mean, like Wednesday, the 18th at noon, something like that, or sorry, at 1:00? If we did a lunchtime kind of thing? No, Cole? So, Thursday, Thursday night?
Thursday, Thursday day, the 20th? I could do it during the day.
We just need a majority, so we just need three of you there.
So, what was the suggestion?
So, we could do, uh, afternoons of the 18th, 19th. Sounds like that would be better for Cole.
No, uh, sorry, the 19th I can't.
Oh.
18th and 19th I can't. The 20th, if it's during the daytime hours.
Thursday, the 20th?
Is it something that, but could someone just call in? And, yeah, we can do it electronically. You don't have to be in person.
Is there a chance we get him before our meeting on the 17th? I guess there's a chance.
Unlikely, from what we've seen in past reports, so.
I, I can do the 20th as well.
I can as well.
If you wanted to do a 20th for lunch.
Let's plan the 20th, um, at, at noon. Does that work?
Perfect.
Uh, do you, okay. I mean, do you need me to, I mean, I, well, I'll move something then. Okay. That's all right.
We can have the mayor pro temp run it if that's a conflict.
Yeah, that's okay. It's not a high, high priority thing, so, okay.
We'll plan on that unless we hear otherwise from the county, if that date works. And so we're required to certify these and send a resolution that we pass back to the state and the county, so. And that's within a certain deadline.
You'll fill about 11:45.
I'm good anytime.
Still talking the 20th?
Yeah.
Where would be me?
Just here.
Here?
Oh, you do on Thursday. That's right.
Conference room?
Conference room.
Uh, conference room?
I have, I have 11 appointed. That's kind of firm. I might be able to be back by 11:45.
What about later that afternoon, if we did like a 4:30 or something? Does that work for better? Yes? Okay.
Yeah, I knew 4:30 too.
Okay, great. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
4:30, the 20th, lock it in.
Okay. And then just one other thing to note. We do have our fall cleanup coming here for the month of November, uh, November 15th through the 24th. The dumpsters will be around the community. So, that's always something people look forward to, and we encourage everyone to clean up around their properties and yards. All right, let me get this on my, all right, wonderful. We'll now move on to, um, our approval of the minutes from October 20th, 2025. If anyone has had a, any comments to review or adjust anything for our reporter? All right. If none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Mayor, a motion that we approve the minutes of Linden City Council's regular scheduled meeting on Monday, October 20th, 2025.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Stewart, seconded by Councilmember Hooley. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, and then going on now, uh, we're gonna go on to our, uh, item number eight. Due to the fact that there's no consent agenda, we will skip that, item number seven. And we are looking forward to this. This has been several months in the making. So, I'd like to welcome our representatives from Civil Science to pre, present some proposed kind of overviews of potential park locations, potential park amenities. So, these are, you know, the locations and how big they are, and the amenities and how they're utilized. This is just our first 30,000-foot view of possibilities. Thank you. And, and we'd like to get lots of public input and comment along the way, so.
Council, I have with me Jeff Paye and Jordan Goff from Civil Science. The council approved, um, them to, to kind of spearhead this master planning. And I'll turn the time over to them, and then I brought with me Ron Kleig, who has been intricate in, in taking care of this and would like to speak on the grants when we're kind of done, grant possibilities, so.
Great, thank you, Mayor and council members. We appreciate the opportunity to present our concepts. And like the mayor had mentioned, this is, um, very high-level. We always say 30,000 feet, right? So, um, there's still a lot of detail that's gotta be worked out, but it's, it's really about relationships between spaces and starting to identify some of those key elements that we want to put into these parks. My background is in landscape architecture, as is Jordan. Civil Science primarily is a civil engineering firm, um, but we've, we head up the Landscape Architecture Division in Parks and Rec. My background before working with Civil Science was the Director over Park Planning for the City of St. George. I did that for almost 10 years, so, um, a lot of what we try to integrate into our designs have come from a lot of experience and, and trying to kind of be that, um, really forward-thinking, um, team that, that works through a lot of the elements, and we really appreciate the opportunity to work with you guys and, and develop some of these parks and, and some of these key things. We always give our engineers a lot of trouble because they're like, you guys get all the good stuff, you know? Who hates a park? You know, nobody really hates a park. There's just details you gotta work through, right? And, uh, they're, they're doing sewer line designs, you know? It's like, how do you, how do you compete with that? Anyway, we'd, uh, we'd love to share our, our thoughts with you on these concepts. I'm gonna have Jordan go through that with you, um, and talk through a lot of these elements. And then we've also got, um, some of our costings with that too, so we can talk through a little bit of that and help you understand what's involved there, and, and then answer any questions you have, so.
Thank you. So, yeah, if we can, sorry, I'm not sure who has the.
I've, I've got this.
Thank you. I don't know where this is coming from. Thank you. Uh, so we'll start off with the, the Thornton Park, which we've already been talking about a little bit today. And thank you, everybody, for your comments about that one. Those are definitely, yeah, things we've been talking about through the process and things we want to make sure we keep top of mind, that those intersections are safe, that people are able to cross there, that that's all working parking standpoint. And so to, to start off here, we've got that new road connection going there, and that's already pretty well-planned and master-planned. And then we're looking, okay, how can we kind of arrange this to get the most park out of this site as possible, while having that road connection going through there? And it's a little bit small to see on there, but you can see there's possibility for on-street parking along that road, potentially with the city standard section for that. So, that could, that could add a lot of parking along that west side where that multi-use field is. And then, and then there's that small parking lot also that would probably serve the playground and the pickleball courts. And then there could be on-street parking on the east side as well, potentially. And then to the, to the west, we've got that multi-use basin, and we showed the soccer fields there. Those are just, um, I think they're U6 soccer fields, um, just little kid ones. And so you could potentially use that for some programming, but it's really more of an informal basin. That's also being used for stormwater retention. And then you could program it potentially for sports, or just kind of keep it as an open, kind of multi-use lawn. People can go out there, throw a frisbee, or things like that. And then on the east side of the road, we've got a couple pickleball courts. And if you see the note there, it says, or basketball courts. There were, we were getting feedback going both ways. And I guess I should back up a little bit to talk about some of the input that went into, into these plans. We did the public survey, um, working with city staff on that, put that out to everyone in the city. And we got, I think it was, what was it, 206 responses, just over 200 responses? was it, two hundred and six responses, just over two hundred responses. And people were able to talk about which amenities that they were most interested in, what they wanted, if there was anything specifically they didn't want. They could provide some text input about things they wanted to make sure were considered. So that was all super helpful in putting these concepts together. And of course, you can never satisfy everything that everyone asks for, but trying to see, okay, where are people leaning? Like, what are the things that the most people are asking for? And we use that and then working in conjunction with the staff and the committee that's on this project to figure out what would be the best amenities. And so that's what led to these master plans and what ended up being included in those. But still, like we've been talking about, this is hardly final at all. We're still way at the beginning of the project. And so there's a lot of room for things to still shift and get figured out from here. But going back to this plan, so there's the pickleball or potentially basketball. People were kind of split on that on the survey. So it could really, you could go one way or the other, just depending on what the priority was there. And then a little pavilion, I think it's, yeah, I guess forty feet. So that could be rentable for small events, things like that, if you wanted to program it that way. And then a small playground. And I appreciated the comment about the fencing on that, because that's been a concern, that that is so close to that road. And we would recommend that as well, putting probably just a small fence around that so kids can't run. It's just got one entrance. I know, at least for me, that would make me feel a lot better of being there. So we would, yeah, we would definitely recommend that. And that playground isn't really, hasn't gone through design yet. And so as that moves forward, we would think that would be definitely a good idea there. And I think, did I miss anything on that one?
Maybe that loop trail?
Oh, yeah, yeah. And then there's, it's a little bit hard to see because it's so small on the plan, but around the grass area on the west side of the plan, there's a walking path loop. So it ties into the sidewalks that are part of the street section, and then you could walk that as a loop. Oh, thank you. There we go, yeah. So you can see it going around there. And then there's a couple little picnic pavilions. Those would be just big enough for like one picnic table under each of those. So this is definitely more of a kind of a passive, open space, and then more programmed stuff on the east side. And I think, yeah, is that about everything on that one?
We did meet with the public a little bit, at a different meeting as well. We had kind of an open house. It was at the big.
Oh, sorry. What did we call that? It was the movie in the park. Yeah, it was a crazy rainstorm at the same time. That got pretty exciting there for a while. But, yeah, we had a, we had a few people make comments and come out and see the park concepts and had the opportunity to participate that way too, so that was good.
Would you please go back to that really quickly? So the, the inner dotted line is what could conceivably be the storm drain detention area, that entire triangle shape? All right, and so.
That would be the bottom.
That's the bottom, yeah. So there'd be a four to one slope or something that goes from that top one right off the back of.
So in theory, it could fill to the top dotted line, to the outer dotted line.
All right.
Yeah.
The storm retention. So materials for basketball, I know a basketball court could just be basic cement, but doesn't pickleball have a little more, a better surface that could that handle water on a pickleball over there? I don't know if pickleball's.
So pickleball, you typically use like a post-tension concrete, which means it's got steel in it that are tensioned, and it kind of helps it so it doesn't crack. Tennis courts are the same. I think the hard part there is you get a lot of debris and stuff that you'd have to really take care of, and so there's.
Just have to be conscientious, because that's the primary purpose, is a storm retention infrastructure.
Yep.
Somewhere applied here, so, just a thought. And then on Gilman Lane, was there, hopefully there's enough there that that shoulder has a generous shoulder for people to park along there as well, on the Gilman Lane side?
Let me, let me just throw a couple photos out. So on, on this future connection road between Fourth West and State Street, it would be the same cross-section. This is Meadow Park over in the Fieldstone neighborhood, five hundred north. It would have the same width and similar striping. And so right now for Meadow Park, we, we have events and activities that occur in this, a playground. But it would be very similar in nature, where the only parking is on-street parking. And so, but a very similar width of roadway, in fact, the same roadway width and very similar striping design.
And there's open space on both sides.
There is open space on both sides in this location. So, just as an FYI.
The road profile on the Gilman Lane side, that's my question. Would there be a good-sized shoulder on the Gilman side to accommodate parking there? That could be one place that, when there's events happening there.
Right.
Them parking along the park would probably be less impactful to neighbors instead of going into the neighborhoods.
Right.
Potentially.
Yeah, I agree.
So I just would want to be sure that we're conscientious of giving a good enough profile there as well.
Okay.
To accommodate parking on that north side.
Okay.
And thankfully, that space, that lawn is flexible, you know, if it needs to slide five feet, that's not gonna make a big impact on this design strategy. So there's definitely room to play with that as the design progresses.
If there aren't any other questions on this, on the plan, we can scroll down to the next one.
I just had one comment on that one. It'd probably just be in the land of budget and not change, but shading for any playground. It's just, I have six kids, and we look at all the parks, and there's chunks of the off-school season where we can't use them because the slides are so hot. And so if there could be some budget allocated to sufficient shading so they could be used during the summer months, that'd be awesome until the trees get big enough to shade it.
When did you say you would propose estimated costs on these?
That's actually on the next slide here.
Great.
Just really quick, before we go to that next slide, Heath and I had a conversation earlier today and just mentioned together that if we did end up with pickleball courts here where it's more of a programmed destination spot, that having a restroom maybe just somewhere right there or somewhere near the parking lot might be beneficial there. And if people are staying for an hour or more, having a facility there is probably warranted, so.
Just on that issue too, I think that's a great addition, because in park design, we always try to do, it's like your kitchen where you have this triangle of efficiency. It's the same with bathrooms, pavilions, and playgrounds, because you want to have a, you know, good sightline to the restroom for kids so they can go there. Moms still can hang out at the pavilion or whatever. And so there's, there's some recipes there that we always try to mix into it, and so that's a good combination.
And then looking at the preliminary costs here, we won't go through all the items in detail, but this should be provided in the packet as well. And looking at everything stacking up, this one comes out to about two point nine million. And there's some pretty good contingency in there. We were talking about this just before the meeting, that it's a lot better to go get a grant and then have a little bit more than you needed then, to kind of grant, and then, oh, oh, no, we're. And so, so that's definitely a fairly conservative estimate. You can see there's like that twenty percent contingency at the bottom. But, yeah, that comes out to about two point nine million for that whole project. And then if there's no other questions on that, we can move on to the next site.
Does this include, it looks like curb and gutter, number eight there, you've just got three hundred and forty feet. I'm assuming that's just the parking lot. So this doesn't include.
Yes, yeah.
Nothing along Gilman or that little side street that, that's not included in.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. This doesn't include the road. So that would be a separate project. This is only for the park amenities and then the parking lot.
That edge there or here, it doesn't include that curb and gutter?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, the park amenities on the east and the west side, but then that road through the middle is not included in this cost. So that would be, run this a separate project probably.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
The restroom too.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, the restroom isn't shown on there. We've got some numbers for restrooms on the other two parks, if wanted to look at those, and what that would add there. So for the next site, the City Center Park, and this is of course existing, probably, at least from what we've gathered, maybe the most well-known, well-loved park in the city. We've had a chance to go over there a few times for, like Jeff was talking about, for the movie in the park, and stopped by to see the farmer's market over there. It's a super cool space down in the hollow. And really looking at just some kind of small improvements here and there to patch up some things that need some help that are aging, and then adding some smaller amenities to it. If you look at the plan here, kind of work from the west side over, first of all, looking at this baseball field, which is existing, but doing some improvements to that field, getting nicer dugouts and a backstop, getting the surfacing and the grass really nice, getting fencing around the outfield, a scoreboard, and really taking that up to like a nice competition field level. And then you can see here, there's this dashed line. There have been some problems in the past. You guys probably know about this field washing out and getting gravel in there and things like that. And potentially, if the city wanted to, that could be space for expanding that gravel parking lot, but we left it out right now and to keep that as a playable baseball field. But if that became, that it, the maintenance just wasn't working on that for that site to be a baseball field, that could potentially transition to an expanded parking area there. And we have that shown as an alternate in the estimates, so you can see how much that would cost if just to decide to do that.
Actually, creating more parking is probably more primary than any other use in my mind because the events right now are not being accommodated well.
Yeah.
Either at the arena nor at the other side of the main park. So parking is pretty top of the list.
Definitely, yeah. I stopped by for the farmer's market, and you can, yeah, kind of where that parking lot is, people are just parked all on the grass and everywhere because there's just not space. So, yeah, definitely. And on that same topic, down on the, in the southeast corner, looking at adding a parking lot where those homes are that the city owns and is renting out right now, if those were removed, that could be space for a parking lot. I think, yeah, about fifty-five stalls would fit there. That would need to be retained, have a retaining wall a little bit to hold that back as, on the north side of it, where that starts sloping down on the road right there. Most of that would be, anyway, not to get into grading details too much, but there would need to be a little bit of a retaining wall around there to make that work, but you could fit that in. And then, we've talked a lot on our, on the committee and with people about, would people use that parking for the park? But even if it didn't get used for the park, because it is a little bit far away and people might not think to park there, even though it's not a super long walk, it sounds like there's a lot of demand too for the aquatic center parking and for everything else going on around there. So we settled on that, really with everything happening there, any extra parking we can get is gonna be a good thing. And just a few more things on this one, a restroom building right there next to, that's the, that pump house building, and there used to be restrooms in there. And we looked at the possibility of renovating those restrooms and trying to put them back in that building, but in the end, it looked like it was gonna probably be more trouble and cost than it was worth to try and put them back in that building, especially while that's, needs to stay operational and for the water infrastructure. And so looking at just like a small precast restroom building, that's usually the most affordable way to do restrooms. And you can get them actually that look pretty nice, like people wouldn't think that it just came and got dropped in on site. There's a picture, one of those on the bottom there. And then also looking at terracing some seating on the hillside next to the arena. There've been some comments about how that hillside isn't super safe, and getting that grading worked out a little bit and adding some nice terracing in there would really clean that up. And I think the last thing was adding an announcers booth to the arena that would sit over the pens on the west side, and, which would really add a lot of value to that arena with not a ton of cost for, for adding that little booth up there with just a little stairs or ladder up to it, and then somebody could stand up there with the sound equipment and everything. And I think, am I missing anything on this one?
Yeah.
No, great. Any questions on the City Center Park?
No, I had a similar kind of thought with the possible future expanded gravel. In my mind, I think one of the biggest issues is we just have a fence there, and the placement of trees makes it so that you don't, you don't think you could go through and use it. But it seems like if, because Thursdays for, you know, July through October, the farmer's market, we have our Linden Days, you know, there's a couple big ticket items. And then all the other days, it's gonna be families and kids. And, and so if it's, if there are creative ways of retaining some sort of baseball field, but then just making modifications so that we could quickly just open it up for those single events and say, this here, I've seen it done like at these like corn mazes where they'll take fields and make them into parking lots just for those one-off things, but then during the off time, they're still used. So I don't know if there's some structural ways of doing that. So it could be both and, instead of being gravelled and then not being able to be used in kickball and things like that. That'd probably be my leaning, so we could use it for both purposes.
And the horse trailer, there's not enough room for horse trailers and parking. And that other parking lot just wouldn't be usable for the farmer's market. People, it's so tucked away and, you know, out of sight, out of mind, and quite a walk and top, topographically. So again, I think, yeah, multi-purpose parking, but then making it usable when there aren't the big events at the arena or the Central Park, we've got to create extra space there somehow.
There are two considerations for both of that. First of all, it's really not the cars and even the trucks, it's the horse trailers.
Yeah.
And those big trucks that can do damage to the lawns and will do damage to the lawns mostly. That's the first thing. We're doing that now, but that would be a consideration to maybe firm that somehow.
Yeah.
Second consideration is if we make, if we make an updated baseball field or update that field at all, to use it, make it playable, there can't be any ruts. And so it has to be considered what we put out on there and where we let them park and drive. And the horse trailers are probably the scariest thing.
Yeah, that's a good point.
That diamond, I know that there's different size distances for different regulation levels of play. And so we talked about that earlier. Do you know what level that would accommodate? Would it accommodate?
We use, we use the horses in that, in the pinto pony colt.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that's standard instead of ages. But we've only got two hundred, on the improved field, we've only got the possibility of two hundred feet as it is there. And that's probably no older than seven-year-olds or eight-year-olds. Jake, when did you play on that field? Do you remember how old you were?
Yeah, it seemed like it was a little older than that, maybe, but definitely not older than eleven, twelve.
A big part of that, too, is using the existing lighting that's out there. So, you know, that kind of locks us into a few things.
Sure.
Sure.
Yeah, and preserving those existing mature trees as well.
Right.
We could take a quick look at the costs on this one. So a few different numbers there. So we're looking at, could you zoom in on that bottom part a little bit? Thank, thank you. So, yeah, looking at, on the construction total for the park without the gravel parking lot, looking at about one point five million. And then with grading it up for that gravel parking lot, really isn't a super expensive addition. And then also holding some cost for professional services and any other things that come up during construction brings us out to about one point seven for that project.
So were these in today's dollars or were these projected out?
Yeah, that's a good question. These are in today's dollars. So if we're looking at, okay, we're gonna build this in five years or something, then you'd want to factor in inflation for that when planning that out.
Thank you.
And then, are there any other questions on the City Center?
Did you say that this one was gonna have the line item for the bathroom?
Yes, it does. Let's see, where is that on there?
Prefab, okay, perfect, thanks. Thank you. And I kept looking for restroom, and I scanned, scanned, scanned. Thank you, that's great. So that's like. So that's like 60. Great, thank you so much.
Yeah.
It's always, it's always shocking when you see the cost of some of these things. But bearing in mind, when you're, when you're doing a facility for, you know, a public amenity, everything seems to be a little more bulletproof and has to be, right? So, I know sometimes when we, like, we've, we've done some restrooms and they're like, because you're servicing a soccer field or something, it's like $600,000. I could build a house for that, you know? But there's just a different level of service that goes with it, so.
And then the last park that was part of this study is over on the east bench. So you can see kind of on the north end of that, that's where that horse trailer parking is, where a lot of people like to park it. There's kind of that bulb out there and there's the benches where you can sit and stuff. And that road is pretty much existing minus the parking along it. So looking at formalizing that road through there and kind of turning that into the parking lot for that space. And then having a few different amenities up there. And there was kind of some, some push and pull on this one, talking to a lot of different people. This was maybe the most controversial park as far as which amenities go in it.
Sure.
So we're trying to like strike a balance here and we're still, of course, super open to feedback about what, what is the right balance for this site. So looking at some kind of more natural features, like some kind of an obstacle course for kids and then like a bike skills course, like that top image. Those are a lot of fun to kind of practice mountain bike skills, but they're relatively level and not too scary, but you can work on your balance and doing the rollers and that kind of thing. And then some pickleball courts, got that fourplex and then one on the north side and then a restroom building and a few little pavilions around. And one of the big constraints too on this site is you can see these dashed lines running like here. And here is an aqueduct easement. And so it's really restricted what we can build in there. Pretty much no structures can go in there, which would include like fences or anything like that. We're hoping that the bike skills elements would be able, would be acceptable in that. So just keeping it to really light uses and then paving within that. And then everything else is located outside of that easement. And yeah, so that's that site, keeping it as, as natural as possible. That was a big concern for a lot of people in that this is the starting off point. There's a trailhead there. A lot of people like to take off hiking on their bikes from that place. And then still keeping the access to the horse trailer parking pretty much as is. And then also adding some more, some more pickleball, adding that complex because there's not really a lot of pickleball on the east side of the city. It's all on the west side. And so there's been a lot of desire for that and there's some space to fit that up there. And I think that's, that's pretty much that one. Any questions on the east bench park?
On this one, I mean, it could apply to the Thornton as well. I see that L shape around the four pickleball. Is that like a, it says retaining wall. I just am, it seems like it's so close to a house that we've had residents complain about pickleball court noise. And so I didn't know if there's sufficient noise cancelling structures planned in the budget for that.
Just a block.
Like, as thick as it can, I mean, it's just like, I don't know. That, that could, that was, that's been really detrimental to some folks that have, that live near some pickleball courts. So that one, that came to mind.
And I was going to ask you to describe the elevation there. How far above that home is that? And, and I see a winding path. I assume that's kind of going?
10, 12 feet?
Yeah.
At any time I'd say Mr. Hutchinson is here and that's his home.
Oh, great.
I had spoken with him today, so I'm glad to see him here. I don't know if it's appropriate at this stage, but he might have an opinion on where that fits in his area. But he's going to help me actively, you know, go forward with this as that might be possibly to be in his backyard.
Well, that's good to know because that's, that's the one thing I was looking at is at home and saying where, how is that going to affect the residents? So thank you for being here.
Yeah, it looks like the overhead lines were another constraint.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. There's a bunch of guy wires that are going down.
There's actually a separate private parcel here in between kind of both sides of this. But you can see the elevation difference from the street is quite significant. But behind the home there, that's, that's what you're looking at, so.
Oh, okay.
So some sort of retaining wall is what was kind of drawn in along, close to the property line. But I, I think as, as we've talked to staff, we definitely wanted your feedback on the number of pickleball courts that were shown here and, and is that still desired? Is that too heavy for this location? Looking for your thoughts on that as well, so.
I mean, I have, my immediate reaction was that the fifth one, the, the isolate one, like that was, I, I, might not be a lot of land to use it, but I kind of thought.
I, I had the same thought. Why, why stick one out there?
Like a little skate park? I don't know, like something that is an extension of the mountain bike? I, I don't know. I just thought maybe we could use that for some, something else.
Originally, we had several over there and then we found the guy wires that were kind of in the way. So we had to scale things back, so that was why there's just one there.
Sure.
What type of fencing was proposed there? Is, is it the acusta fencing?
Right now, it's not for what's shown on the plan and the cost.
It's expensive. I, I worry about nefarious activity up there. It, it reminds me a little of our Dry Canyon parking lot. And if you put that, if you put a big six-foot non-seethrough fence, anyways. So that's good to know. I appreciate that. Do you feel that, I'm just throwing out my personal opinion, I apologize, but if we were to remove those two courts on that west end, is having three courts up there still sufficient? Lincoln, did I just offend you over that?
Whatever you put, they will get used. People from, I was playing just the other night down at Pheasant Brook and people are coming from all over and just bouncing up and down all the cities here, trying to find somewhere to play. Whatever you put there will get utilized.
Well, we have the neighbors here. I don't, I don't know if we want to ask them what they think.
I'd love to hear from them.
Yes. Go ahead and state your name for the record.
So I'm Daniel.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Daniel, could we have you come speak the microphone just so it's recorded and online for those? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Daniel Hutchison. My wife, Melissa. We, we've lived there a number of years now and actually really enjoy the area. We use it for hiking and biking. And so I, I like seeing it improved, but nature's more of a nature theme. But I am really concerned about the pickleball courts, especially right there. If you put that wall up, we basically won't be able to see the mountains anymore. We love being able to see the mountains. Kind of worried about the noise and the light pollution as well. It's a, it's a really pretty area, especially at night and the evening.
So Melissa Hutchison, we actually bought our home for the view of the mountain, which we love. And right now, we can see all the way up and, and if there was a wall and the pickleball courts, which I know everybody needs those too, but we would be very sad about not being able to see the mountains there. And, yeah, so, and I know Chudley's right next to us, so.
Hello, Steve Chudley. I'm the other neighbor that is right there next to it. And same thing, right now, there's a big mountain of dirt there that is also blocking our view. And I talked to the guys last year and they said, this is a temporary thing. We're going to take all that out and build a road up to the water tank or something. But that's never happened. So I, I'm, we're, we would not love having a whole bunch of extra traffic up where, I mean, that's where you're getting into the wilds. The whole idea is that's like, you go on up the mountain to the wilds and to, to situate a bunch of pickleball courts with lights right there sort of takes away the whole wilds part of it, just our opinion anyway.
Sure. Good feedback.
Yeah, I don't, I don't disagree. I, I, I agree with Lincoln with the demand for pickleball. There, there is a demand for sure. And yet, as we had our conversations, this one, putting pickleballs up there felt, pickleball courts felt maybe forced, a little forced. Compared to other locations in the city. And, and yet I know, especially on the east side, we have a, a large contingency of folks that love to play pickleball and are looking for courts.
Had a room full of people a couple of years ago wanting east side pickleball. So trying to make everybody happy, anyway. But need to take that into consideration, yeah.
I think it's interesting to note, and I did a little research today, and of course Linden is small, but we're number one in Utah County in courts per capita. For, I mean, we've got one court for every 800 people. Next one closest is Riverton and, and these guys. But I mean, for our size of our city and the availability of courts for our residents, that, you know, could be thought about as, as, we're number one in Utah County.
I appreciate that information. And, you know, talking along the lines of that, it does feel a little bit forced, especially with the slope. How much more expensive was it to build these ones in comparison to some, somewhere where it's a little flatter?
Yeah, I see the zigzag.
Yeah, those, those retaining walls are expensive for sure. And there's also an economy of scale when you're, a lot of times you'll see them in groups of four. There's a reason for that because of the way they're built. It's, it's less expensive to do them like that. Whereas like a single is a little more expensive if you're doing post-tension, so.
Is there, I see that there's some room on the east side of the parking lot. Would, before you hit the water line, is it like, could two fit on that side? And then not have the four on the west side?
Well, I think that's on top of the easement.
Yeah, it's, the whole easement is the whole width of the project.
Isn't that line the easement?
There's two lines.
The aqueduct's kind of in the middle of this, those, these two lines are their easement that they won't let any structures in.
Look at the top pickleball court and going north of it.
Oh, I see. Great, thank you, thank you. I do see the other line now.
So there's.
Yeah, I guess in my, then if it was like an either or, I would be not having pickleball up there if we were, if it was coming right down to it.
And it's interesting because this is a master plan. This is a visioning document where that, that future city councils will look at. It's, it could be 20 years down the road. It could be next year that there's a, hey, you know, our, our parks and rec department says, hey, we really fill this demand and we're going to bring this to the city council as a project we want to do this year. And, and so it certainly, if it were to go on this document, it's not the last time you would have an opportunity to oppose it. But it certainly, if, it's certainly within your rights as citizens to nip it now and say, hey, we don't want it on there now. And, and so anyways, I hope that, sometimes you see this and you think it's imminent. It's, it's, it's not imminent in any way. This is a visioning document. But, but I, I do think that it, I, I, it, it does feel a little bit forced there. And is that the right spot for more pickleball courts? Yeah, so I, I, I see where Cole's coming from too and I kind of lean that way a little bit.
Steve, is your home pictured on here? Is it at the entrance? Where's your home?
So do you see where the pickle courts are? Here's the straight down. Go to the right. Mine's the next one.
That's you.
All right.
Is that a pickleball court I see be in your backyard?
Everybody to your court, couldn't we?
I had people there this morning, I didn't know. We, we tell people to come and use it. We don't have any lights on it, so there's no light pollution happening and it's a single court. There's no, no traffic.
Quick question on, back to the visual of the, would there be any way to put just two pickleball courts there with a single, make the single two and eliminate the four down below? Is, is it topographically possible to do two there somehow situated?
So there's a, there's a piece of property, I think we, somebody mentioned it earlier, that's got the mounds of dirt on it that isn't right there that the city doesn't own. And that's why we've had to kind of stay out of there.
What about it, and then what about the going just directly north or west of the pickleball court? Or even north?
So there are some guy wires over there coming off those poles. Yeah, it's a tight fit. Yeah, it's a really tight fit.
So that, that lot that's just north of no house and it's been, someone's been trying to build that forever. And it's, I don't think it's really buildable for a home and that might be a good option for the city to purchase maybe and maybe.
I have, I have spoken with the owner of that piece of property and he is a willing seller. But we, in fact, he texted me back the next month. He says, what do you think? Should we look at it? I think he's pretty willing. He did say to me, I, I think I understood him right, that EPNL was willing, or whoever the power company is, was willing to move those power lines.
That's so expensive.
For the money. But he, he did mention that that was a possibility, that he, he could be a willing seller and could be motivated. I just make that point. And also, I would also say that when we were originally doing this plan, one of the plans we, we showed you on the boards when we were here were, was a little BMX course down there. And as I've read through the, the survey, it was pretty clear that nobody wanted, not many people wanted the BMX course there. But when I read their comments, it almost sounded like they were talking about motorbikes. And that may have been a misunderstanding, instead of just pedal bikes jumping around in some circles and, and riding around. So that could be re-investigated, but, you know, they would, they would say BMX bikes are loud and they, they use gas. And some of the comments were that way.
Yeah, pedals.
Yeah, so may, maybe more of a, what they call a pump track would be better suited, which is they use kinetic energy to kind of, you know. Springville's got a really good example of one where they did near a detention basin, kind of in the foothills. And it's been really popular, so that might be a, something to check out in the future.
I mean, you all have done such a great job. When I was looking through this, I got like so excited about these offerings. So I really appreciate what you've done. And it is hard to take out all the input and put it into something that works. I don't know, conventionally, I know that this document is a long-term document that will serve as a tool to help with grant writing to say, hey, look, we've got this penciled in. How much flex can you put in a plan? So could that rectangle just have listed a couple of purposes? And so it doesn't fit so determined to go towards pickleball, but it could be three of these things depending on whatever factors might be included. Grant willingness, appetite of residents, shifts and land up there. I don't know. I mean, is something like that done at all or, or is it pretty much no, put down one or two potential uses?
We do try to, when we work on projects like this, it is good to do what you're saying so that there is some flexibility there. Ron, you've written a lot of grants. Tell me, what, what have we been able to accommodate with dealing with some of that? And how do we?
Well, I'll talk about when I come up there.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah. But yeah, there's, there's some strategies for sure. I know we've, we've learned the hard way in some projects where we've gone and said, okay, we needed exactly 20 park benches and, you know, they're out there counting every bench. Make sure you got it. And those are easy things to accommodate. But, yeah, like, that's why a lot of times we'll say multi-use sports area or something. So that it qualifies for a lot of different things.
Yeah.
We're not moving on this. When would the motion and approval be for the plan? What's our game plan? That's a, that's a great question, Jake. It sounds like there's some uncertainty on this one, maybe a little more certainty on the other two. Yeah, if I could maybe provide direction, I, I, I think the first two seem pretty good to most of the council. And maybe we look at an option without the pickleball courts on the top, on, on this last one. Would the plan be to come back one, one additional time for approval or one additional time for discussion? What was the rough game plan? Our thought originally was that after this presentation, they would tweak these maps, these plans with any feedback from the council and then we would come back in another meeting for an approval. And so really, it was just one more.
And so, really, it just one more is all that, that we had anticipated.
And I think that's appropriate. But I think there's probably enough of the council that would love to see a, a, a option B on, on the Linden East bench without pickleball courts.
Or, what about just the, the ones that are away from the homes? We could still have one or two already. Because we've had a lot of people ask for, for courts.
I, I agree.
Here. And then just make it more distant and not create.
So just removing the four down here?
Obstruction of views and things like that.
We're, we're wondering if we could come back with a couple of different options, and then you guys could select the one that, that way it's all in front of you, you can see what's, what the options are, and then.
Sounds great.
Spirit of what Cole was asking for, just a little flexibility, a few options, I'd appreciate that as well.
Okay.
I think it, I mean, I know working with master plans previously, you can say, well, it's just a master plan. It'll probably never happen, but the problem is, the residents are like, but it's there as a master plan, and so someday it may execute. So I think, I think getting, I think there's a, a win-win here that we could still, we want some activity up there to sort of have eyes on this, on the space. And some good active uses that people have been asking for, but it's just a matter of putting them in the right places that are a win-win for everybody. I see some nodding heads, so.
Not one pickleball court, is there room to put another one closer to the road? Or is that slope so extreme that it doesn't fit in there?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, either north or west, or something to do two.
Or south and move the bathroom to the, where the pavilion was?
You could look at it and size it up and then give us some options. I, I think Lincoln, probably like two courts would, and, and of course, economy of scale, if you're gonna build. If you can fit a couple, that'd be great.
Nice to have something on the east side. Thornton Park, you know, Thornton property, that's still your west.
Ten minute drive.
Well.
Top of, people that are in Canberra area.
Yeah, we would love to have something on the east side. I've, I've played on Steve's court, appreciate you letting us play there. And, 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 and you know, there's others that have.
Were you there this morning?
I was not there this morning.
Name yourself. Heath, a, just a general question, have you, are you still seeing this heavily used by horse trailers? Could that, could that horse drop-off area somehow occur down, I guess there's no turnaround, that's the problem.
Yeah, but there's a drive-off the other side, and that's a steep drive. I, if I go up there randomly during the week, I'd probably say on an average, uh, maybe, I could see one or two trucks and trailers up there a day. But, you know, it might be, they might be up there all day, up riding, so it's, they're not parking side by side by side. There is availability to walk their horses from different areas if they dare come up, it's a steep trail, but, I've seen, uh, horse trailers in there, probably one or two a day, on average. This picture, isn't this further south than the horse parking lot?
So, so where that, that single, the, the single, um, pickleball court would be, just, there's that clump of trees right there.
Right. And then the horse parking area is further north.
Yeah, horse parking lot here, I'm, I'm just asking.
I see those trailers there, I'm trying to remember.
It's flat, is there enough room to drop one court in there without disrupting the pull-through? I don't know if there is, but. Or if the easement would prohibit that even, that might be the deciding factor.
Well, I think that's probably good feedback, just look at it, see if it's possible to get a couple in there. Give it your best advice, your engineering advice on that, but scooting it up and away from those residences. Alright.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
That's great.
Full work, we really appreciate it. And so now, I'd like to invite, uh, Mr. Ron Clegg, who is our wonderful and amazing grant.
Yeah, he's very amazing.
And, uh, now, we've seen, we've seen, oh, we've seen the dollars. And, uh, and now we would love to see how we could hone in on some grant money to make.
So I wanna thank you for approving the budget to pay for them. This is a big help when we get to the grant phase, cause then we know what we're gonna pursue, right? So we're in the grant cycle right now for the Land and Water Conservation Fund. That started on October fifteenth and goes to January fifteenth. That fund could be used to pay for the Thornton Park. It's hard to get your grants to pay for an entire park, they, they're just not structured that way. So if you want to fund that park in this grant cycle, we gotta get moving on that. Or you can wait for another cycle, which could be a year, or longer, I, I don't know. And I did want, I took some notes while they were talking, that north bay, really, that north side was just a basin. When we were talking, when we were planning this, I said, there's no way we can get recreation funds for a detention basin, they're not gonna fund that. So we put trees around it and a path and made it so you can put fields down there. But the whole purpose really of that is stormwater detention. And, and any recreation we get out of that north side, it's great, but. It's a bonus, yeah. So, we really kind of deferred to public works on that, and, is that fair to say? And tried to make the best of what we could of what was left on the south side of the road. And then down at the City Center Park, that existing building that's down there, I've looked at that several times, so has Heath. I think our plan is to put a bow on that and give it to Juan, and say, here you go, Juan. Except Heath needs one room. There is some use that can be made of that building, it needs to be cleaned up and, you know, maybe restuckled or something to make it look nicer. But structurally, it's in pretty good shape. It's just, like, if you have to redo plumbing and all that kinda stuff, it gets pretty pricey, and I don't think it was a good idea. And then, Jake left, cause he knew I was gonna talk about this. Parking lot down there, you guys need to work out, I think amongst yourselves, is it baseball or is it parking? Because we had some, we wanted, me personally think, I think it should be parking, cause every time I drive by there, I don't see anyone using it for baseball, but I see cars down there all the time, and I drive by a lot. But there's some Jake and Van and some others want that to stay as a baseball field. So it's pretty hard to move forward as a consoling team when we have this mix of half want this and half want that. And so, we don't know. I, I don't know. So we kinda got this, maybe we'll do it someday thing, but is that really what we want? I don't know, if it is gonna stay as a baseball field, I suggest you do something that it gets used more. It really is, I told you, you left because I was talking about that baseball. You can tell them, Jake, about your thoughts about that baseball field, cause I'm saying, you guys gotta kinda work it out amongst yourselves, is it parking or baseball or?
Sure.
And there should be some protection from the next flood down there.
Yeah.
If we pipe and run the water to the storm drain.
Can you zoom in on the note, Adam? Juan and Noah are, um, looking at what we need to do as far as stormwater detention down there. So we had him put this note on there. And the reason we haven't designed it is, we don't have good numbers. They have that draft master plan that was done years ago, but we don't have a lot of confidence in that. And so, they're redoing the master plan, and then we'll know for sure if we gotta put some detention down here. So I think as far as the parking lot and that one baseball field, you guys need to go arm wrestle or something. I, I don't know. I think the public's mixed about the same.
But is, are you saying that because if, from a grant writing perspective, you have to name a primary use?
Yeah.
Of the land, or it can't have multiple uses?
Well, I just, no, it can have multiple uses, but can it really have multiple uses?
I don't know, like, from a engineering structural perspective, but if that rectangle was all dirt, and I've seen baseball fields that are all dirt, and that would tend to some of this problem of grass and sinking, is that something that we could write towards and say, well, it's a parking lot when it needs to be a parking lot? And when it's, it's an all dirt baseball field when the kids need it during Little League season, you know?
Well, I agree with Heath, if you get horse trailers down there trying to turn around, they're just gonna tear it all up.
It'll tear up the dirt, okay. So you would need gravel at minimum on top of the dirt for it to function?
That's not very good for baseball.
And it would be used, it certainly would be used if it's open as parking first.
Sure.
The folks will haul all the way in there, so it'd have to be fenced or opened for available parking.
And like those little posts you pull out or something, okay. That's good advice.
If I could, Steve's asking, why, why keep it? And I think it's appropriate for the group. Linden Baseball, Linden Little League, took place down there for a lot of years, and so there's a lot of old-time Linden folks that love those fields, Van and myself included. Now, all of our Linden Baseball takes place at Pheasant Brook Park, and it's, it's, uh, it has zero shade. It is a tough watch for a lot of, uh, I, I get asked that question, maybe as much as any, because I'm down there with my kids at, at Linden Baseball. And so I think there's a lot of us that would love to see that field brought back to its former glory, and our entire Linden Baseball, um, coach pitch, machine pitch done there, because it is so shady. I mean, that's, it, I, I love that park, I, I think it was said, you know, one of our favorite parks, people love that park. And so I, I would love, I would love to be attending my kids' baseball games here at the Linden City Park with its shade, rather than at Pheasant Brook. And so it's just a trade-off of, do we improve this? Or do we spend some money so that, that Pheasant Brook could be shaded? I mean, it is, it is tough, it is my least favorite thing to attend, is my kids' baseball games. It's always a hundred degrees, it is tou, it's always August, it's tough. And, and, and so the shade here would be really nice. And, and, and so, there's a little bit of nostalgia, certainly for me and Van, that it's like, oh, this is where I grew up playing baseball. These fields were incredible in the, in their day, and why not spend the money to have them be these incredible fields where it's shaded? You have the facilities, and, um.
Are needed. I know the Little League is pretty small now in Linden, it's not.
Well, and if we do this, and say we draw a lot more, you know, people here and the games, what does that do to Pheasant Brook? I mean, we've got those fields, and I know there's no shade, but do we draw away from that and we don't use them anymore?
For our leagues, for our three leagues, we use two fields, uh, probably four nights a week, probably.
Yeah, four or five.
Four or five, and it's just, there's no lights either, so it just goes till dark. If we moved our leagues up to these two fields, it would just make those available for, for rental or for other teams to practice during the season. It could be a trade, we could move our league up here, and then that would just make that one available. It wouldn't affect us with loss of time or effort, we do it on two, we could do it on two.
Does someone have a, a light, a? Just looking at the aerial again, would you pull that up, Adam, please? I have a couple of questions. Alright, so, this would be Little League level, what is the distance you have to allow for a Little League?
For, for, if you're gonna play a tournament, you need to have a fence, and the fence needs to be minimum two hundred feet. So the, the current field could do that. The infield on this field.
Where would the two hundred feet go to?
Well, you can look on, it, it's not two hundred feet from the center field to where the light pole is now, you can draw that, Adam. Can you see the light pole down there, in the middle, between the two fields? Right there. So it couldn't be further than that. But for, for our Little League kids, we don't have fences anyway. But the other direction is just barely two hundred feet from the other field. Now, the infield size doesn't really matter, it's the base length between sixty feet and seventy, fifty and seventy feet. So we've always had the littler kids on this field, the bigger kids on the other field, because where the base pads are, those are adjustable as well.
So what if, could we explore utilizing this area for more trailers and parking for the arena? And then if we go to the other end of the park here, there, yeah, is there, or is that, is there not room, or is there room?
Two hundred brings you.
Wait, that looks, do the little kids really need to bat that far, for the little tiny kids?
It's not the T-ball.
The T, I'm talking the tinies. What if this was just the tiny field?
Well, that's the way we use it.
For the tiny players, so what's the distance the tinies would need?
They wouldn't have a homerun fence, it wouldn't matter, it's the base distance that matters.
So we could make some alternate parking, you know, stones or something here, because they don't need to bat, clear back there.
No, as long as they have a pole.
What's, what's the highest league we have in Linden right now?
Right now we go to coach pitch.
Which is what age?
Uh, that's probably the sixth, fifth, fifth and sixth graders.
So we have, but we have a lower division, like the littles, the four-year-olds, the four-year-olds to six.
And then machine pitch.
So what if that was a field for the four to sixers, and then the other field was the, but, what I'm saying is, this area here have some, so the trailers for the horses often come in here. What if there was some use here for the trailers to have an alternative area? The little kids aren't gonna be hitting and running about balls that far deep. And then on the other end of the park, if you go back to the aerial, the other challenge is when groups rent the pavilion, or we have our farmer's market, there's just, there's not enough parking here, like, this, could we open this up to have some stalls? I think we could create a number of stalls there, cause right now it, it comes in and eliminates stalls.
We had Noah draw that, do you remember how that turned out, Adam? I think at best, without going into some of the utilities in the main lines by the bathroom, I think he had four extra stalls. Is what he figured he could come up with when Noah was drawing.
You're talking right there.
Right there.
Square it off.
Square the parking lot off. And then if you, can you rotate so we see a little bit to the west there, Adam? So, this is another spot here, where, let's see, I don't know if these are striped right now, this has been restripped. That's the right end, yeah, okay.
It's striped on the other side.
This has been restripped since this Google picture, but, alright. Just how we could, I mean, I know we explored in engineering, trying to create a few more stalls, but if we're gonna be spending money redoing the park, I mean, maybe we just.
So I wonder if we should try and save the baseball field, but maybe move it or reorient the park a little bit, so we can get some parking and keep the field, is that what we wanna do?
Yeah, I, I mean, we don't have any league that needs two hundred feet. And, and I don't know that, how much demand is there? Is there a demand for a Linden Little League that needs a two-hundred-foot fence? If you don't see it in the near future, you probably could shift the entire field.
One of the, one of the things that is a possibility that we're considering with these gentlemen is possibility of making a little revenue on a good field.
Yeah.
With, with the fence during baseball season, so if we didn't really care about that, uh, which would, you know, who's gonna get precedent? Is the baseball team gonna show up when the trucks are parked on the, in the area? But the kids, if they're not gonna hit baseballs into that, and we're sure of that. I mean, it's a baseball, it's a park, if your base, car gets hit, maybe you shouldn't have parked there, but.
I mean, if we, so, what I'm thinking is if this shifted over, the orientation of the, this is like the little T-ballers, and then maybe we create a little, another, some parking here and some parking there. Would that fit? And if we could scoop up some more parking anywhere over there, would be beneficial too.
As, as long, I'm, I'm willing to have it drawn and looked at, as long as the kids can play without cars in the way. And, and, and we don't have to fight, because now I can't play, cause there's cars in the way, that's, it's a poem, I didn't mean it to be. That's, that's really kinda held a feel.
And you didn't know it.
And the little kid hits it into the parking lot, I mean, that could be.
I mean, what's the parking situation right now when you go out with your families and the neighbors in the league now? I mean, there's not enough parking here for everyone to come hang out and do bas, baseball if something's going on over there.
Especially if the horses are there, cause the trailers are.
Well, if the horses are here, then everyone's gotta find parking over there, and vice versa.
For horses?
Yeah. So anyway.
There's some underutilized space in this.
Yes, exactly, things like you said, were shifted around and we orient to what the actual uses are versus, you know, middle school-sized fields that maybe you don't need.
Top, maybe with the Mazer Academy wanted to use this field too?
They did, but high school regulation, there's not room. We sized it. Heath and I looked at it and there's no way it could be high school level size.
Again, I'm, I'm thinking about safety. If we move the baseball field to the west and reoriented that and we really don't need two hundred feet, although that's where the light poles are. And then a kid hits one into that other baseball.
We could put a taller fence up.
The kids just have to be safe in their playing area. Um, so if it's drawn and we can put some maps to it and see where it is. I just, we just can't have baseballs crossing into baseball fields.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Ron is right. From our perspective, baseball field, park and lot, if there's a way to do them both and be safe, maybe that's optimal.
Does that work for you, Jim?
Yeah, absolutely.
Cause we were kind of at this.
Be a win-win there.
What do we do kind of thing, you know? And it's a resident, the questionnaire thing was about the same. I think it was about fifty fifty of, let's keep them, let's get rid of them. So maybe we.
I had someone that runs competitive leagues approach me and ask who to talk to, so I'll point him to one of you all. He's like.
There isn't a guy. Not the city. Send him to me.
Perfect. Anyway, he was like, I know you've got these fields and they'd like to bring some tournaments here. And I was like, well, I'll let you know who to talk to.
You know why?
Uh, or here, they like this one in particular.
That's because it's not used often. And right now it's free and they can make the money and fund their travel teams. They'll hold their own little team league.
Right. But they should pay, I mean, rent it and, right, but anyway, I'll pass that on to you. So anyway, to finish.
Well, maybe the Pheasant Brook becomes the, the older league accommodation. And I mean, obviously there could be a little, little guys and then a next level up here.
I mean, the same boat.
There's a lot of space there. There's more space.
Could be the bigger fields for, we could create some, yeah, grow some trees.
Or put up shade structures or something.
Counsel, I don't wanna drag into area of areas, but last year I presented a plan in my budget to shade that area.
You did.
For the kids and for the spectators. And, and we just gotta think about it. If you wanna fund it, I'm ready to go with instruction. It's probably two hundred and fifty large.
Yeah.
So.
So just so you're aware of the grant schedule, so we have that one grant that if you wanna use that, the longer we wait, I know we've talked, this could be a long term thing. The longer this drags out, the more expensive everything gets and the more competitive the grants get. So the Utah State Outdoor Recreation Group is phenomenal at marketing and that what started out as being a secret.
And we're hosting one of their.
Yes, we are, in December.
Events. Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Is that grant you're referring to that could be used for Thornton a match where we would?
It's fif- the fifty fifty match on that one. That one was used on Creekside when we put in those appro- improvements down there. And then the other outdoor recreation grants will come out probably in January, February and be due a couple of months later. Those you could pick some items like a restroom or bleachers or something and probably fund one thing or.
That's awesome.
Or maybe the, um, outdoor thing up on the hillside or something. And maybe that's what we should do to just start showing some improvements up there, you know, or something. I don't know. But anyway, that's all I had.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Great information. Thank you for all your research and work on this and listening to all the, balancing all the opinions. All right. All right, we're moving on now to item number nine. This is a presentation and discussion on station area plans. And I'd like to welcome our community development director, Mr. Florence, who's going to present kind of an overview and some of the requirements for these. And I know Mayor Aserson stepped in. Trustee Aserson was in here earlier.
He was, yes.
Is he out in the hall?
This was the item that I think he's.
This is the item he's interested in.
I'll just go check.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you.
Do you want me to wait or should I?
Yeah, I guess we'll just. All right.
Okay.
Okay, go on.
So Adam and I thought as we, if we've, as we've looked at property on seven hundred north in Geneva as a, maybe a potential site for a future light rail station and as we, as the county and state, as we talk more about mass transit, we just kinda wanted to have a, a quick presentation on what the state requires. So they, twenty twenty-two, they passed House Bill four sixty-two. It required cities that have a transit station for light rail, front runner, bus rapid transit to, um, adopt a sta- a, a station area plan goal as part of their modern, modern income housing plan. And then to also do a s- what they're calling a station area plan. So they, and then the state law set up, set some requirements of what's needed in those station area plans that we'll go over. They call it a fixed guideway system or facility that is either a rail system or a bus rapid transit that has its own dedicated lane for, for the most part. If you look at, um, a number of these cities, let's see, there's a link in your report here. These are all the cities that are, were required to have, um, to do a station area plan because they either had a station or they've been designated for, um, a future mass transit station. So you can see that Salt Lake County, um, Utah County, not quite as many, but they, there's a number of cities that still had to do a lot of planning, especially for the front runner stations. So, um, you know, Springville, they're just in the process of adopting their front runners, uh, master plan or station area. Um, I, I've sat in on a few of those, uh, committee meetings. So, um, let me go back real quick.
Mike, I just have a question real quick. Can the state designate us and, or can we request? Does it go both ways? That's.
Yeah, real, what they've said is these station area plans have to be adopted by the end of this year. Uh, and so they've kinda designated who, who needs them already and they've helped fund each one of these station area plans. But what I would see is, is if BRT comes to Utah County or light rail, then they would just extend that date out and say, hey, these new cities, or these new station areas now have to have plans.
And one of the things, as I serve on the Mountain Land Association of Governments Council Board, these are, transportation is a big focus. And then a lot of it is just bringing attention that a community or city wants something and, you know, getting, showing that we're preparing. So it's kinda, like you said, it is kind of both directions somewhat, so.
So these station area plans, they, um, they have five criteria that you have to meet. You've got to increase, increasing the availability and affordability of housing. That includes modern income housing. You've gotta put density around these stations. They don't tell you what the density is, but they just said it's gotta help accommodate affordable housing. Promoting sustainable.
Affordable or moderate?
Um, it's moderate income housing. Yeah. I think, well, the, they, they interchange those.
Okay.
The, 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 the goal says increasing the availability, availability and affordability of housing in moderate income, including moderate income housing. So they use both terms in that, in that, um, criteria or in that objective. Second one is promoting sustainable environmental conditions, um, you know, such as improving air quality, enhancing access to opportunities. So trying to put these in mixed use developments or close to jobs. And then increasing transportation choices and connections. So by creating connections with, um, different transit modes, whether that's trails or, or, you know, collector streets or other public transit options. Our area in Linden, we have on the regional transportation plan, this aqua blue line. It, it shows on a long-term basis that, um, about tracks or light rail coming down through that, um, Geneva corridor there. It also shows, if you remember a few years ago, we did the central corridor study that, um, planned for BRT going from Lehigh to Orem. And that designated, uh, five different stops in Linden. Uh, you can, you can see that here. So for each one of those, whether it would be a, a light rail station or a bus rapid transit station, you would have to ha- do one of these station area plans for each of those, uh, station areas. Brittany put this great map together. So if it's a light rail station, you have to do a station area plan and what shows in yellow, a half mile radius around that station. If it's a BRT station, then it's a quarter mile, um, station area plan around each one of those. The state requires that if you have multiple stations, that you, um, have to do a minimum of three. So if, if bus rapid transit were to come to Linden, we'd have to do a minimum of three stations and then each year after do another station. And then, um, then you have to adopt, after that's adopted, your station area plan has to be certified by MAG with, in consultation with UTA. And then after that's certified, then you have to do a five-year implementation plan and putting ordinances together to, um, implement your vision for that station area.
What, uh, two questions. What do we, how do we plan when it involves PG? With those Eu- Euclid boundaries? And then if an area is built out, is the expectation you just have a plan and that in a hundred years, when they let go of their land, you're gonna put something that, you know, like?
More of a redevelopment plan.
Okay. So have the plan, but when you said implementation, it's more of, it's on the books?
And it's, yes, it's more zoning for, for example, higher density or, or bringing jobs, trying to, yeah, look at the vision for what, what's it gonna be in ten more years and, you know, what could it be?
And then how do we do it when it involves PG?
Yeah, so the state, they, they, uh, have a statement in there about that as well, that you have to coordinate with that community.
Gotcha.
So they, they would have to, because that half mile radius, for example, for light rail, um, takes in the part of PG right there, they would have to adopt something as well and would have to coordinate on a plan.
Thanks.
So, so right now, we don't have to do anything, you know, because we don't, we haven't been designated for a station, but that's something we, if, if one were designated, whether it's BRT or light rail, that's something that we would have to accommodate.
There's, there's been some talk about potentially purchasing some land that might be available for a future transit stop for light rail. And so we wanted to make sure you were aware that that has consequences to it as, as far as these plans. And, and right now, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but I, I don't think there's a density requirement listed in the state code, but it's heavily emphasized by UTA and, and by MAG. So if you have a transit stop, there's an expectation that you have a higher density of housing.
And when we've, in this particular site, we meet that, I think, very handily. I think the talks with UTA, what's already been approved. It's within what they like to see. So.
So this is Orem's BRT. For example, you can see the three different stations there. They've designated the quarter mile around those stations where they're, and they adopted their master plan for those, or those, that area, station area plan for those, uh, three stations. So.
Are, can cities say no to a BRT station? Or is it like, no, you're getting it and you're gonna make a plan?
I don't know. We haven't got to that point yet, in, at least in Utah County. I mean, we, we, they, they do come and talk to us and, and try to locate those in the best spot. But I believe when they were, when they were doing the, um, you know, this plan, I, I think they wanted, um, I forget if it was every quarter mi- every half mile or every quarter mile. I can't remember how often they wanted a, a station. I can't remember if.
Part of it is, there's a lot of politics and funding and, and so I've nev- if anything, there's communities now that want, want it and they're not getting it because there's not funding. So I don't see an appetite to ever say, you have to do this because they're just not funding to even do the ones that are wanted. So, uh, this is just more, you know, setting up kinda an understanding for the long range. You know, long after we're gone, what do we need to prepare or think about or have a plan? And as we see things develop, making sure there's accommodation potentially to, to, to fit the things at, at least is what the state transportation likes to see. And of course, that can change over time as well. BRT is, you know, for a while there politically, it seemed like that was the focus, but that has now somewhat eased off. Orem City did not like BRT going up State Street. They did not like the area plans that were gonna rezone and have, you know, lots of density. And those, lots of locations, I think, for five. So that was politically kinda overturned, like, no, we're not gonna em- embrace that with the council that came in.
Yeah, that's why I was wondering how much we have.
Yeah. So, yeah, BRT, you know, you, it's been, I think, you know, they could consider it a success. The UVX between UVU, the BYU there, but a lot of people question, you know, is, is BRT the answer for all of State Street?
Right.
Because it impacts businesses and you can't have turn, turns except at the signalized areas. And it takes up a whole lane and shoulder and, and it's a ver- you know, it's less expensive than light rail. Um, but there's, what I've been seeing politically is light rail, the legislature, um, is focusing and some of the mayors, like with the Provo Airport, they are pushing now more, let's get a focus on light rail and really just ha- having a plan for that so that the airport connects up to the point, which is there at the former prison area that's a big focus by the state and getting a lot of funding. And that's been a frustration too because people are seeing one-time dollars being appropriated to the point, which is still an EPA cleanup site versus putting funding into our valley that, you know, is the fastest growing valley right now. So there's always a lot of push and pull. Some, some elements are like, it's BRT, BRT's better, it's less expensive, it's a little more accessible sooner. And others say, well, let's do both. It shouldn't be an either or, light rail or BRT. May, you know, we need a plan for both. But funding, I mean, Adam and I have been in meetings and it's millions and billions. I mean, I think they, they're priorities. They want, they want to double track front runner first. Um, I think that's, Adam, would you agree double tracking front runners probably number one? And then a lot of people say, well, BRT would be more attainable to afford next. And then light rail, but then there's some, there's some push and pull between the BRT and light rail. So.
This is a long ways out. They were in the meeting we were in, um, just a few weeks ago, a month ago. The extension from light rail from Draper down to Lehigh, they think is fifteen to twenty years out. So the realistic timing of light rail in Utah County, we're talking about the plus years. In my opinion.
Yeah, it's hard to have a crystal ball entirely on it. But, yeah, I think the growth of the Provo Airport though is, there's a lot. Provo becoming its own international, it's already gone international and there's a lot of going on there. There's, so, yeah, depends who's politically in the seat, you know, the legislature. And there's still controversy now because right now the point causes the light rail to jump over the original alignment to go over I fifteen to drop into the point. And that's a massive cost. And then it changes the alignment, how it comes into Lehigh, where Lehigh felt the first alignment made more sense for their population and, uh, business corridors. So anyway, there's just, but anyway. Uh, we digress. Let's go back to your report.
Do you have any questions for me?
Yeah. I think for a light rail station, if we're still saying, this is, this is our TOD site that we've identified. I think we fit within what's, you know, imagined with the Village Center and what's already been, um, approved with the Ivory Homes community and what still may be forthcoming. So I don't know that we see an obstacle there, but I think what Mike and staff are bringing up was the BRT stations could be a little bit more of a lift to, um, meet those specifications in a plan of some kind. Am I correct in?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, you would have to do station areas plans either for BRT or light rail and, um, you know, luckily the state has been funding those. They've, they've funded probably thirty or forty plans in the last couple of years, so.
And you know, some mayors and some cities and staff are saying, well, And you know, some mayors and some cities and staff are saying, well, even before BRT, which is still expensive to have a dedicated bus lane, Bus Rapid Transit, just give regular bus service. Like Saratoga is furious, they don't even have regular bus service yet. Just do the normal bus lines. Get some capa, you know, build capacity, build ridership, you know, even BRT is jumping, they feel ahead of the game funding-wise and just doing basic service. Yeah. So I, and I think that's too, we could still conceivably have just regular bus service through here that doesn't require these stationary plans. They're specifically for the BRT itself.
Good info.
Anything else? Counsel, any other questions?
Thanks, Mike, that's great information, really interesting.
All right, well, thank you so very much. All right. Any further discussion on that, counsel? Okay, we're all covered, and we can always continue, you know, forwarding questions to staff, and if, as those thoughts and questions come up. We will now move on to item number 10. This is a public hearing to, regarding an ordinance to be enacted for your purview tonight, so I would entertain that.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
My second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Hoyt, seconded by Councilmember Stewart to open a public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. I'd like to introduce, welcome our counsel, Mr. Hawes.
We are finally bringing this, this has been a long process, it's, as you can tell, it's only 37 pages.
Thrilling, really.
It's a lot of red.
So it, it is a significant structural change of how we're doing our appeals process and, and review, and, and we're proposing to, you know, thank the Board of Adjustment for years and years of great service, but to enact this ordinance that would allow us to appoint an administrative law judge to handle those roles. And, and so, what this ordinance does, it's, it lays out the process for selecting and hiring an administrative law judge, someone who we anticipate would be a law-trained, not necessarily, maybe if somebody has, you know, a lot of experience in administrative proceedings and, and law and governmental issues, they, they might qualify, but, but they've got to have special expertise to, to address that. And, and the mayor would go through the process, we'd put out a, a request for proposals from different people, and, and we'd get candidates, and the mayor would work with Adam to, to find a name and select and bring to the council to, to do that. And then, as, as you go through that ordinance, they would act as our main administrative body, they'd also act as an, an administrative enforcement. When we're doing our code enforcement and things like that, they would hear those types of hearings as well. They would handle our, our variances, those types of issues as well, be a big part of our planning department. So that's what we're looking for. I know, Cole, you had some, some questions. I think it's probably the best way to, to handle it tonight, it's just, what questions do we have? And, and let's, let's do that. And again, the bulk of this ordinance is just incorporating those changes into the rest of our code, so.
And just for the council's point of reference, how many appeals, I know, but not all of them may know, how mu, how often does it get to an appeal level?
You know, not, not very frequently. Not, before this last year, this last year's been a little bit busy for us, but before this last year, our Board of Adjustment, Mike, was meeting.
It's been like two years since we'd met, and we'd only met then because we needed to approve the minutes from the year before, and, and some of our great Board of Adjustment members, they've been on there for over 20 years, and they're, one of them's had, had some health issues, he's had a stroke, and it's, and even at the last time for this billboard appeal, it took us two months to get a quorum, because just trying to work with different schedules, and it was, it was difficult.
Not very efficient.
Is there a reason we would not do this? What would be the compelling reason to not do this?
You're asking, asking me to argue against myself, which I can do, but.
Lawyer.
No, public involvement, you know, having, the Board of Adjustment is made up of appointed representatives, and so you get public input and public involvement. That, that's the key benefit that they bring, that the public feels involved in that process.
Appreciate that, but at this point, when you're, when you're dealing with some of these land use issues, the public isn't, may not be qualified to know to do this, right?
Right. I was gonna say, in our, in our planning commission, we, because this affects our, our zoning and, you know, planning ordinance, we took it to the planning commission, and, and one of the commissioners rightly pointed out, we used to do planning, the, the Board of Adjustment met all the time, because we were just nilly-willy giving out these variances, you know, what felt good, what felt right. But the law has really tightened down now, and, and frankly, we used to bring a lot of stuff, you'll see there are several places where we're taking, you used to be the, the Appeal Board, and where we're taking a lot of that away and putting it into this, because again, even your hands, as, when you put your, your hat on as the administrative body, not the legislative body, your hands are still tied too on what you can do based on what both federal and state law require of us.
And what we're seeing is now what really goes to the appeal board is more high-level escalation that has pending litigation quite frequently. And so to have these wonderful people in the community who have served so well for so long, but they're laypeople like us, I don't even know that we would say, and we are here all the time, listening and getting, you know, counsel, but for people to show up once every two years and then try to apprise them of all the caveats and the legal and the everything, it's tricky. So having more of an expert level.
I intended one at Pleasant Grove, thinking I was going for a different appeal item, but apparently that one had been dismissed, and they were onto this other one. But, but they use this legislative process, and it was very, very interesting, and I walked away thinking, why are we doing it the way we're doing it in Linden? We really need this legal, technical expert to be able to making these decisions and, and guiding us in the right direction.
And just for clarification, that, that brings up a good point. We're going to, it establishes our general administrative law judge, but there's also a provision in here that if we need someone with very specific training, that one can be appointed, specifically for group homes that come through, for water, for some building and code enforcement, those types of issues.
That's great.
Provides a mechanism for us to hire on a temporary basis, someone who has even, even more expertise, so.
Thank you so much, well-presented.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, you know, I, I think some people think that Lindenites think differently, and, and that, hey, we want a Linden person making that decision, but I just think that the laws have changed to a point that we, we can't, we can't, we, for the protection of them ourselves, the city as a whole, I think it's time for this legislation. Again, years ago, when we had one of these few appeals, it was like going, you really are tied, you have to follow these parameters, you have to do this, this, and this, or else you open the law, the city to the huge lawsuit, and they're like going, then why are we even here? You know? We, we don't have a choice, we have to do it this way, or else we bankrupt the city. And, and those are the factors that, that we just have to take into, that's the lay of, of the land, unfortunately, so.
Well, this is a public hearing, so we would invite any public comment at this point.
Now's your moment.
Just getting a little more comfortable in that seat.
Seeing none, I'll motion to close the public hearing.
Yes, thank you.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hoyt, seconded by Councilmember Stewart to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, counsel, back to you on the matter at hand.
I tried to read all the pages. I fell asleep twice. I drool, right, no. You, you prepared this, I assume this is common language in other cities and?
Yeah, we, we've leaned heavily on other cities in drafting this, and, and Mike and I've spent a lot of time going over this. We've, we've talked to some, some experts who have, one individual in particular who's helped multiple different agencies draft their administrative law judge ordinances, and so we, we have spent a lot of time that way.
About it being an appointed position, is there pay associated with this?
There is a pay, it would be part of the, that would be part of the contract. We'd ask for a request for proposals, and, and it would be a negotiated.
They would, oh, okay.
Yeah, exactly.
And what would be the background of this person?
Like I said, typically, we'd be looking for somebody who has, is legally trained, and a, a lot of these administrative law judges are former city attorneys or, or county attorneys who have the civil experience.
Oh, okay.
The Utah Cities and Towns Convention, this land use book is often, you know, talked about and discussed as being the one for Utah. The author, Craig Call, he was the one that was there at Pleasant Grove, he was the one that sat and explained all the things.
Craig Call is one who does a lot, there's, there are several who have a lot of experience, and.
And do we, and, and we put them on a retainer, but we never use them? How does that?
Yeah.
Then when they, when they get used, we pay them more, or how does it play out?
It, it's, I'll just use myself as an example, I'm the administrative law judge for Lehigh. I just do that, I, I moonlight there, but I have a contract, I bill them an hourly rate that we've agreed upon, and last year, I did it twice, and spent like four and a half, five hours, you know, on each of those, and so, so that's how it would work.
Okay.
So on a retainer type of thing, we're not, not technically a retainer, because we're not paying them to be on call, but it's just, hey, we have a contract that when we have an issue come up, we'll contract you, and, and you have been appointed and have the authority to, to act in that role.
How many cities still do it the old way, versus how many cities do it this way?
Quite a few, and Utah County still uses the, the Board of Adjustment, Salt Lake County, not so many, but it's, it's definitely changing.
I, I had some questions, and they could be rapid-fire answers, you know, it's like, there's, there's no depth, right? I'm just like, I probably don't know what this word means, and I'm trying to understand it. Overall, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable with the principle of the shift, and then these were just some smaller items, and I was like, I just had a follow-up question, like, I'm so, in, it's all two dot 22 point, you know, something. So point zero fifty sub point one, 10 calendar days, I th, I thought I'd seen 30 calendar days.
It was all over the place in our code.
And so is there gonna be some conflict if they have a land use complaint versus?
We've tried, we've tried to, to, there are, there are just a small number that we have to, it's state mandated. But where it's not state mandated, we put it to 10 days. Just so that there is consistency, so that when somebody comes to one of our, our staff and says, what's my time to appeal? We're consistent. And again, you'll notice on some of those issues that really affect property owners' rights, in our code section, we require the city staff to give them notice of what their appeal rights are, so they're not missing it. It is a short window, but, but it's a, a window that's consistently used throughout the state.
Okay, that's perfect. With the removal, I mean, this hardly ever happens, imagining a removal would be even less frequent, right? It's mayor removal can remove a person for cause, and then that person can appeal to the city council. Would there be an argument in the name of efficiency to have the same procedure to a point, where the mayor recommends, the council confirms, to have the same removal process, where it's like the mayor recommends and the council confirms, so that is the same step?
It's, it's kind of the same thing, only it just says, hey, once you've been removed, it gives that person the chan, the opportunity to go to the council, but they don't have to if they don't want to.
It's like, it's done.
Yeah.
Okay. And then in section 78, when the judge recuses himself, what's the procedure to replace them?
That's when, when we would have the city administrator has that special, because what happens, what will happen is if we have somebody recuse themselves, we're already in that process, we need to get that hearing going. And so we're, we'll have the city administrator consult with the mayor, but the city administrator will have the authority to appoint a replacement administrative law judge.
I didn't know if I saw that mechanism in there, but if it's, that's great. And then if there's subpoena language in there, is there enforcement if a person doesn't respond to a subpoena?
The enforcement is, you are bound by whatever the.
You got, you got your chance.
You had your chance, and now you're bound by the administrative law judge's decision, and you, and you're stuck.
Perfect. And then in that same section, like the administrative judge can overturn a lot of, so it's six and seven of section 80. I don't know. Philosophically, would it be, I'm, like, would an alternative be that they send it back to the decision-making body with that, hey, y'all, you need to fix this?
That's exactly, that's exactly what it is, when they find, okay, if the administrative body or the, the underlying body has done something illegal, then the administrative law judge just fixes it to make it legal, if he can.
Right, and put it in line.
If he finds that it is arbitrary and capricious, there's just not sufficient evidence to support the decision, then it's remanded, it goes back to them. Yeah, Mike and I went back and forth on that, we do want the, the elected bodies, the appointed bodies, the people who are directly responsible to the people, to be making that decision.
Yeah.
And, and if they haven't quite crossed all their Ts and dotted their Is, we're gonna send it back to them.
That's great.
And, and there is, if, if you go to some of the other cities, they just have what's called a de novo hearing. That administrative law judge hears it all fresh and new, and he gives no deference to the decision that was made below. We've kind of decided we don't want to follow that. There is a provision that allows us to do in the de novo hearing, but only if both parties stipulate in writing that, that, that's what they want to happen. And so both the city and the, the person appealing would have to agree that that's best in that circumstance, and that's just a catch-all in case there are some chances where that might happen. But overall, the vast majority of the times, we're just going to be reviewing the record and determining whether or not it was illegal, or whether it was arbitrary or capricious.
Gotcha, thank you. And I know this is no longer gonna be in the open meetings realm of things.
Right.
And I understand there's wisdom in that, and I wonder if there's any way to make some parts of that, either summary judgments or some sort of, I just, there's something about that, like the transparency, when you said a trade-off, I got thinking, I'm like, yeah, you don't have the residents that are chiming in, but there's that open meetings sort of flavor to it.
Right.
So I just didn't know if there was an in-between, because they tend to be very contentious issues, you know, if they're at this juncture, and maybe lessons learned for other people that might be considering similar things, thinking about one in, in particular that went through the adjustment board, like if that was a lesson learned for other people. So I just didn't know if there was something that could be done that doesn't make it so you're formalized into open meetings, but the public could still benefit from the lessons learned from these procedures.
We could, I, I, we, we could sit there and say, hey, we'll, we'll hold this, you know, as a, as an open meeting, that anybody can attend, and post it on our agenda. I, I guess we could do that if the council felt that was important. But again, when we get to these points, it's usually pretty, what's the word I wanna say, technical and, and focused on these individual circumstances, on these individual cases. And, and honestly, I, I think, again, this, this is one that, that comes from, Craig Call wrote a, a thing about, hey, this is where this is and how this should go, and, and this was his feeling, that it was important that these be held as quasi-judicial proceedings. And, and I, he, it would go as far as say, hey, you, you probably can't even do that. I'm not sure I agree with that, but, but there is a push in the legislature that's saying, hey, they've already said that, that you get one public hearing, you know, either at the planning commission or the, the, the city council, you know, they've, they've already gone in, before it was just common, you had public hearings every time, but there's a push in the legislature to kind of tamp down on that. So we could tweak that language if, if the council felt that was necessary, but I'm not sure that it, that it is.
Yeah, it just is like, we have open meetings and closed meetings.
Right.
And I don't know if some of this becomes public record in any way, because it's in this middle ground.
It, it does become a public record in the sense that it is a public document, and it's subject to the grandma request, and, and that record is certainly, you know, the government, the public is entitled to those governmental records.
Sure.
And so in that sense, it is open, and it does become a public record technically.
Sure.
But, yeah.
I mean, I, I, it's not a strong feeling, but it's just a philosophy of transparency that we're shifting it from, to, to now being closed without any feedback loop, you know, for the community, but that's just, it's cool if the, the council.
And I think that, I think the distinction is, is because you're dealing with individual property rights instead of the whole city, in, in these appeals processes, so.
And then the only, the last two questions I had, just had to do with part 37, where we're striking Board of Adjustments from major subdivisions and minor subdivisions. What does it mean, expert panel would be the appeal authority?
That's already established there, Mike, you wanna help me with that one? Your expert panel, again, it, it's, it's when we have specific things that are related to it.
A year or two ago, the state established for engineering requirements that there be an expert panel. And so they have to have an engineer hired by the city, one by the developer and one they agree on together.
That's defined in state statute.
Gotcha.
Sorry.
That was just another place I'm like, oh, we're not going to have residents chiming in on subdivisions and so, thank you. Sorry for all the questions.
That is more, I believe that is more for an engineering standard.
Okay.
Yeah. And I could see that coming up in the building code enforcement too. That's really technical.
We may need, Brian, to that, still for major, minor subdivisions to say administrative law judge plus an expert panel.
On the table we're talking?
On the table.
Okay.
I don't know for sure. We, because before we had Board of Adjustment and expert panel. And the expert panel is just for the engineering standard.
Uh, yeah, on the subdivisions.
Yeah.
Okay. So if you're okay with that, we will not just strike the Board of Adjustment, but we'll add the administrative law judge in the major and minor subdivisions. Okay. That's a good catch. Good job, Cole.
Lots of, lots of training wheels, lots of training wheels.
So impressed.
You get to make the motion, buddy. This is, I mean, my man.
Anyway, there is very, lots of red.
It's a lot of red.
Lives with an attorney.
Yes, 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 absolutely.
Yeah, that's right. I'm trying to figure this out. Okay.
She would be proud, I'm sure, at this moment. No, yeah, I think the other, because you answered all the other questions. The one was just the philosophical one about the council's thoughts about open meetings. Because is the Board of Adjusters currently open?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, and again, this is one person. They were a body, so they are clearly a public body and clearly subject to the.
Right, yeah. I can see how technically, I just didn't know what philosophy was.
All right, council. Further questions on this?
I'm happy to make a motion if we're ready. Make a motion, I move to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash fifteen dash O enacting Linden City Code Chapter two dot twenty-two as presented with changes to the major and minor subdivision.
In part thirty-seven.
Is it more than just two dot twenty-two? It's the whole of?
And, yeah, the, the whole, it's, it's the ordinance and the other referenced code sections. Because we reference like forty-five other code sections. We're not just amending chapter two point two-two, so.
So chapter two point two-two and other references.
And incorporated, yeah, other reference code sections.
And other reference code sections.
Okay. Taking the motion.
Motion by Councilmember Jacob, seconded by Councilmember Hoyt. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian and Mike.
Really quickly, this next, this last item on the agenda, what is your estimate on time that it will take?
We can continue this. This is discussion item only, so if you.
Well, I just wondered if we should do just a quick five minute break, just a quick.
Sure. Whatever you think, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll just do a quick.
Perfect.
A little break. We need to stand up. He's rushing.
So Adam just said thirty years out, maybe?
Or light rail, sell the D I.
About forty-five years ago, I was talking to U T A.
Do you guess?
We'll be back.
This is, we've got all the, uh, we've got all the waterways. It'll be fifteen years.
So far, so good.
I've talked to my brother. So a lot of times we have to solve is that there are twenty-five ways to.
Yeah, this meeting we ran, that there was actually U T A was presenting a plan to bring light rail from Draper down. So I asked a question for a long time before it was actually happening. They thought it could, that's just to get it to be. So.
Or like.
It's a fun one. Have you seen any good movies?
Just been in front of the box.
Uh, no, we got.
The, uh, the, the tax fish.
Ask me, I was.
I feel like you're always there for those Tuesday movies. I feel like if it was recently, it's probably a horror movie because it's like all the horror movies.
It's a lot of money.
No, it wasn't. It was actually.
How are you?
Drawn?
You're always so good to come show.
They're on, right on the same path. What was it?
We give you any interesting, uh, article? We got a Zootopia two coming up here pretty soon.
I'm glad to go see that.
My friends out to six. You to text every day. So we are.
Direction was clear as wine. I'm out there and I told them, we just have a pretty good idea.
Oh, good fortune. That's one I saw.
Good one?
That basically, you can't.
Did he really?
And I had to hand type his like rosters. And so when you were saying that, it was like, what was the, before we had word? Word perfect or whatever. Yeah, yeah, it's like, you know, but when you were saying that, I was like, oh my gosh, it just used to be such a.
It was.
It was a lie.
It was a big deal in you where it's like, so every scene gets older, I mean, like, they got a trophy and there was a draft. Like your uncle Brett drafted me and I'm like, oh, you drafted me. It was a big deal. It was such a big deal.
I, yeah, I love those years. It was a good time. It's so sad to not see them.
They all does it. Yes.
I'm just like, you know, we don't have as many kiddos.
I love when he was like.
You went somewhere, you went to town, where to go? For Connecticut, Yale.
Like, you know what I mean?
Yeah. It was pretty, pretty cool.
PG does for sure. I would, because I better. Yes. By the.
Like seventy years.
I think that'd be awesome.
And it was a good fun.
There is like that.
And then I saw everything.
But it would have been up to reality.
Yeah, it was.
And I'm out.
The kids make fun. They're like, you would have been at eight thirty, you're so old. First of all, I'm just, yeah. I don't get sick as much, but I get enough sleep.
Taking care of my body.
Tell me how you're doing.
Come back.
Come back. It's so lame, but like really, I've learned. As I say, you keep the seeds, space, yeah.
Yes.
Every day, you do great. And I was like.
It's real. It's a real thing.
Is it lame on the weekends? Absolutely.
But a lot of times not, right? Because it's like, there's a time or two where I'm like.
I had time in the morning, it's top tier.
Yes.
You have to like, this is perfect.
There is that where I'm just like, you know.
It's kind of nice to stay home for a little bit.
Sure.
It's a different month.
It's a different month, right? Yeah, like, it's so lame, but.
All right. Do we have Adam stepped out for a second? Okay. Got two bishops in the house now.
Same ward.
Yeah.
Kind of the legacy, huh?
I did open the.
And there was one.
Back to two thousand and nine.
Which is me start.
Cause I left in two eleven P A and this is from two eleven P A. We have two more years. It's like, ah, it's crazy. Oh, yeah, but it's stacked, it's stacked.
All right. All right, welcome back everyone. We will now move on to item number twelve on the agenda. And this is just a, oh, hang on. Oh, excuse me. Yes, thank you. I, my eyes. We have item number eleven. This is a discussion item regarding consideration of an arts committee here in Linden City. All right.
You know, I'm gonna just pitch this right over to Cole. Cole asked for, uh, for this to be brought forward as a discussion item. And I know he and Heath have talked on this, but no action tonight. This is just some ideas. Cole put all of this together, these following pages and did a lot of work and research, and so I'll let you take off with that, Cole.
Oh, thanks. So with the discussion, I put in the report just the two questions. One is pretty straightforward, like a yes, no, if we should continue down this path or not. And then the other is an open-ended question having to do with your feedback. So Heath and I have been chatting, it's been some months. Heath actually has a deep bench of expertise, having participated in arts councils and been a part of them. And so we were just talking about how in Linden, we have a, a lot of great activities that are sort of one-off and a few that have recent, in recent history started to turn into a tradition that would fit within a line of arts. Across the neighboring cities, there's lots of different structures to help organize this. But Linden doesn't have an organizing hub for these sorts of efforts. And, and most do around us. If they don't have one now, I have eighty percent have like in sort of now offering. But if we were to add people that have come in and out of trying to do this, it's even higher. And so the, the current vision of it, that we have, there's a, a continuum of structures. The, on one side, probably the most intensive is a standalone nonprofit organization that has its own funding and own board, everything. Then you have councils and commissions. And what we're proposing is even a step more flexible than that as a committee. It would operate similar to like our tree board sort of tier, where we would have, we're proposing like five volunteers from the community, one serving as a chair with fixed staggered terms, park and rec staff liaison, and then a council member liaison. You'll see right there, those are the proposed duties. It fits neatly under parks and rec. And they would have within their lane just the responsibility of fostering and organizing, it's organizing current offerings and fostering some new opportunities. And then to be in an advisement capacity to the city council. So they wouldn't be making decisions per se, they'd be submitting recommendations for us, for bigger items. For example, they could, in the parks department that have looked at the park grants, they could be a group that looks at those with, with Heath and puts together recommendations. So these are just some loose things. We would qualify to become an arts agency, which opens up additional resources from the state, because we're already doing some of the items on their checklist and a few others aren't that far off. We're not envisioning for this inaugural, if we were to start it soon, that we would ask for any budget. We would fit within the umbrella of Parks and Rec and then in needs, we would reach out and apply for park grant funding. So we're not looking for additional fiscal resources as of yet, just the human resource of time for one of the parks staff to be a liaison. So there isn't much as far as demand on the city resources, so much as it is organizing things that are going on. And the, the structure of a committee makes it nimble enough that we don't have to worry about restructuring it, reconfiguring it, changing ordinances every time we want to shift. It would allow for some flexibility. And then if we find in overtime that it would require greater structure, being upgraded to some sort of council or commission that would require ordinances and we could visit then. But right now, this structure, I think, would more than adequately meet our needs. Talking to some people that I'm, I'm involved with, with my liaison responsibilities, I think there's an appetite for volunteers to be a part of this, reaching out to different arts organizations in our city. They are really excited about what they can bring to a more organized effort. So I think we have all the pieces. It's just putting them in a sort of a different order. And Heath, do you want to add anything from your perspective on that? He, Heath has drafted, in the event that we wanted to go that route, actually what like a formal ordinance would look like. And so that's in the hopper if we need it. These were just a combination of thoughts I have and I took thoughts that Heath had submitted to me as well.
When we originally talked about it, Cole and I, we thought about a council, a commission, a board, you know, we, we looked at everything. So I, I just, from my past experience and past paperwork, sold a commission like.
Yeah.
So that stuff would be easy to put together. But I think with this, if we had an arts council together, sorry, committee together, I think when word got out about that, I think people would start coming looking for money. And so that they could probably, we could probably direct them to, and they may want to be a part of the board or the committee, because there's been several attempts over the last couple of years for the city to sponsor a child's musical.
Yeah.
And to use the building, but they need, it's just mothers and they need, they would be looking for funding and then use of the building. That's probably where it's gonna go to.
Yeah.
But until that happens, we don't have to get too nervous about encumbering that. We do have the, the park tax, which the arts has been, in my opinion, kind of underfunded a little from our twelve years of park tax. So I think we can probably put something together and, and get volunteers. There's been enough interest in the past.
And Heath and I were also talking, brainstorming about what some initial offerings could even be. And so we have, we have all those pieces. It, it's just really tonight is a question of, should we continue putting energy into this? If the answer is yes, then there would be another opportunity where we would bring something back to you that would be a more formal city recognition of the committee. But today it's just, should we keep going? And if so, if you have any ideas that we could add to the, the pile that we're already amassing.
Well, thank you very much for bringing this forward. We have some amazing, I want to commend, you know, the art displays that have been happening at this, at the community center. You know, we brought in concerts in the park now, and at first it was kind of like, let's test this out, let's beta test it. She's done a lot of legwork on that, but I think it would give her a sense of confidence, like I have a structure I can plug into versus, you know, kind of coming every, are we, are we going to do it again? So just having that organizational tie-in would be great. And Heath is, has a lot of experience in this area and how things, you know, how this can. Do you feel that this could somewhat, you know, getting a committee involved, just a little bit, provide an offload or a little bit of a structure as well that you would welcome, I'm assuming?
I, I think so. I think, I think that I would start probably as a liaison just to make sure that doesn't encumber all the other things that we've got going. But I, I do see the possibility in future time for growth and opportunity. And maybe that's all we do is funnel into the park tax. But one of the things with the park tax we originally set up is you had to be a five oh one C three to apply. And so she, we, we originally talked about Ann Stevens. Getting some park tax funds for those concerts instead of it coming out of the recreation fund. But if we wanted to tweak that a little bit, why, she could possibly get some funding for the concerts and then other arts things. Similar.
Yeah, that has been an obstacle for a couple of groups, not having an existing five oh one C three to apply for that. So there's a lot of things here where we could just kind of blossom things and house them, you know, together. And one of the things that's been discussed is I, I'm very much in favor, let's start it as a committee, because with a commission or a council, they have a little bit more authority, they have a little bit more. We want this to be very much, you know, as an advisory group. That's not going to kind of run a little bit, you know, outside the, the city auspices.
I think, I think what we'll probably see in, from my past experiences, members on the committee will, will have something they want to do. They'll have an art project. Yeah, they'll have something and we'll, we can probably just kind of be looking for, they're, they're gonna, yeah, I'll be on your committee and I've got something I want to do. So we'll just have to kind of tune that. But again, we can go back to the park tax and they can apply if we maybe tweak the rules or make some of park tax money available for this arts committee as we, as it grows.
I'm fully supportive. I love this idea. I think we've been wise on our commissions and councils. When we first started, we had the C-Cab. And at one point, it was like, hey, this isn't working, we're gonna do away with it. I think as we grow as a city, there's things that make sense. This one makes all the sense in the world, and it will be very much, the success of it will be based on the board members, I think. And I think it's wonderful. I think it's great. I'm all in.
And Cole has already been stepping up and having connections. He's serving in a capacity with the Hail. So you'll see him at the farmer's market, rapping in Hail and giving away tickets. You know, he's so, thank you to Cole. This is something that we, you know, it's a very timely time to. We've talked about in the past to, someday this would probably happen, and so it's good to formalize it potentially, so.
Yeah, I agree. I've been in a position as a secondary principal where you're in schools that don't have a focus on the arts. And when you turn it around, and for whatever reason, arts tends to take that backseat, you know, to sports and different things. And I know that when we paid attention to it and we applied direction and funding and, you know, goal-setting and such, it's just, it thrives and the whole entity is, you know, better for having the arts programs. So I'm 100% behind this.
Doesn't seem like it's a cost to us as a city that it's not gonna impact your organization too much. And certainly gives some good, good experiences to us as a city.
Please proceed. Thanks, we will. I've been, we've been making sort of a census of all the art organizations in Linden, which has been awesome, and connecting with them, and so we'll bring you the next phase. Thanks for the support.
So maybe similar to what we did with the park tax and the mini-grant, maybe we come up with a formal policy that the council can adopt, and that would probably be the next step.
I've got that.
Oh, perfect. We'll start with that.
An ordinance, just a policy. This is how it's gonna function.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to item number 12, and this is a discussion item regarding the review of draft employee policies and procedures.
So this is, this first one, this is in response, Jake's brought this up a few times, grant incentive award policy. We've had a couple drafts that we've bounced off of our department heads a few times on this. And just not looking for a decision tonight, just looking for feedback. So the scope of this is just trying to incentivize employees to look beyond some typical grants that maybe we've seen. And then also try to secure donations for the city and help offset some costs for projects that would otherwise we would bear the full cost of. So we've laid out just some framework of this. This would be grants that have to be greater than $500. And so if you're getting a $300 grant, that's great. But some of those smaller dollar amounts, they're really not worth it by the time you calculate how much time it is just to even apply and then submit things at the end of it. And so things that might be eligible, there's a list of possible grant opportunities there. General guidelines, this would be some things that we are looking at. This would be above and beyond the employee's normal work duties. So if it's a grant writer position, if we had, say, Ron Clegg was here and worked for us full-time, he wouldn't be eligible. Or we have a grant that we've asked as part of a job description for our emergency manager to apply to help offset their fee or their costs. And so that would be one that I would say, no, that's not something that we're looking for. You're getting a grant to help pay for yourself. And so we would specify that these have to have pre-approval. This isn't something that just somebody's out looking randomly without input, especially where most of these require a match. The timing and limits and team efforts here listed out. The award limits, this is just something we threw in as a discussion point. I don't know that we're stuck on this, and I'll get down to this matrix and kind of explain how that dollar amount could work. So we put some points to this, basically tried to put some definitions on whether it's a non-competitive or moderately or highly competitive grant. And assign those to some points. Then the dollar amounts receive certain points, time commitments have certain points. Whether or not there's a city match required, if that's an opportunity. And then if it's new funding source, if it's a grant that hasn't been previously awarded to the city, adding those all up. So the way we've looked at this is $1,200 sounds like a lot, but to get to that level of points, this is a type of grant that an employee is probably working on this project for a year and a half, maybe two years, from start to finish. It's a lot of time. Something that might be applicable would be a grant through Mountain Land Association of Governments, where you're applying for money that doesn't even come available for two more years. And then you're following through with design on a project. And then you're following through with actually bidding out the project, and you're following through on construction. And then you have closeout documentation that you have to submit to get reimbursed. And so the level of work is quite significant if you're in those higher point ranges because of the dollars and then the sources of funding. So any thoughts or questions on this? I did, did highlight some considerations, kind of the grant writer question. What if somebody's assisting a grant writer? So Heath's sitting there side by side next to Ron, and they're consulting a lot. If Heath is actually the one applying, but the grant writer's helping, how does that work? And that's a little bit fuzzy. Are they, let's see, should the grant writing, the second one, sorry, should grant funding for program costs or offsetting costs of employees be included? The CTC is one that came up where this is a position that we have, that Jamie's been awesome at getting grants. It's basically a handout, though. It's, the county says, we have this money that's been allocated through a federal mechanism. And if you want it, all you have to do is submit me an application, and we're gonna give it to you. And we've actually used some of those funds to help offset her costs of employment. And so where we've said, hey, please apply for this, is that something that we should pay an incentive for? I feel like no. Same with the emergency manager, I would say probably not. Where we're asking you to go apply for this specific grant to help offset your costs. So that, again, just another question. Kind of along the similar lines, not all positions are employees, or maybe in a spot where they could apply for grants. Is this equitable? Is this just treating 10 or 15 people differently? That's a question that came up. I have thought if this is well-publicized among our employees, though, it may get people looking. And that's what we want. And so even if you're a front desk clerk, maybe there's a $1,000 grant out there that helps a program within the community center, and nobody knew about it, and they just researched it and found it, and boom, they get 100 bucks. And so I think there's some value still there. Should donations be included? That was something that got asked, where it might be, the police department's a great example. They've got businesses that donated and paid for our K-9 and all the equipment that came with it. It was nine or 10 grand worth of value. And should those efforts be incentivized? That was a question. And then that last one, what about employee efforts that lead to significant efficiencies or saved expenditure? Should those types of things be incentivized, or is that just part of the job?
Love this, Adam. I have a few thoughts, and then I'll let a few more jump in. The donation, there's some gray area in all of this, right? I love where it's going, and I'm really excited about it. Maybe starting from the bottom going up, the expenditures part, I love as well. There's a ton of gray area there, and so I maybe think that's maybe a second phase that we look at once we've implemented this. And we say, okay, this is going really well. We've, you know, snuffed out all of the gray areas. We could look at that, but I think there's easier ways to manipulate the system when it becomes efficiencies and cost savings. So I would say maybe phase two, but I love the idea. Donations, I think yes, unless we start to get into like stuff that, like, oh, hey, they came over and dropped off lunches for us. And I don't know, you know, the K-9 thing is something that clearly has a benefit to the city. It's awesome that we have a K-9 program, and the fact that that was all donated, I think yes. Especially if that donation was acquired by an employee. If those people showed up on our doorstep and said, we want to give this to you, I don't know that that merits it. But I don't think that was the case. I think we were out searching. It was relationships that brought that donation in. Again, there's a little bit of gray area there, but I would lean, specifically the K-9 one, I would lean to, that is a total benefit to the city that was free to the city. That's exactly what this program's about. You should be incentivized. That's my opinion. The one that it's not equitable, it's not, and we want to be fair and kind, but I think it's okay. I think that it will incentivize behavior, and I think that that's okay. Grant funding. I don't know. I find myself being okay with number two, even though you're not, which is interesting. I'm kind of okay with it. It's a benefit to the city that we have an emergency manager. The fact that part of it is paid for by, again, this is us going out and looking for free money, and it's never free because we're paying for it other ways. But I, I'm almost comfortable, even though it's paying for themselves, and we were gonna ask them to do it anyways. It is grants, it is within this, within the same vein, so.
And it would have, if it's an easy one, then it has lower point value.
Exactly. I guess the only question I have is, when do you, can you stack points? And can, and when is the cash in?
Cash in per grant.
When do they actually get the money? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, and is it a per grant point system? Where am I stacking my grants for the quarter, and I've done these three, and so now I have 75 points?
Yeah, I guess in our minds, this was like per grant.
And I'm fine with that.
Yeah, so.
That's, that answered my question, and I'm comfortable with that. There it is, the timing.
Yeah, so it's paid only after the award or contract has been executed and signed.
What's interesting is some of these larger ones will reply, will rely on city council, right? You've gone out and you've got a 50% grant match, and if the city doesn't decide to do it, that's unfortunate. But fine, as well. I really like this, Adam. This is looking great. And if, and again, let's dot all our i's and cross all our t's with Brian. I don't want us to get into any liability, being a government entity. But I'm comfortable with the dollar amounts you've thrown out. I'm comfortable, it's all looking really, this is, I'm really excited about this. Looks really great.
Any other thoughts?
We had, we had similar things like this in the IT industry for patents. And certainly, there were some people that weren't in job roles that patents were really likely to be found. And that's just, that's just the way it is. So I don't have a problem with some people, it's gonna be easier for them to get the grant than others.
Okay.
Is there anyone who is not eligible, then?
That's what I was gonna ask, but I mean, you as the city administrator are approving these. Are you out of the loop then?
I mean, if anybody, if they, and this is, this is, they're doing it within their normal duties. I mean, and maybe it requires them to, yeah, it requires them to put a little more time in, and maybe.
That's my only question is, if you're spending time on the job that you're paid for, pursuing grants.
It's gonna incentivize behavior, and you're right. Are they spending too much time?
Should the grant?
But you're gonna have a man. I don't think these dollar amounts are gonna change behavior extremely. And so, I mean, for $1,200, sounds like, hey, that's a nice perk, but that's honestly, oh my gosh, what did I just do to myself? When you look at how much is involved in it.
Well, and as you're, I noticed here, it said that you're gonna give them credit for time put on. Is that time only outside the job, or is it part of the time they're paid for? I think that's what kind of the mayors are moving to.
I think that would be within the job, and so it's not, we're asking you to put in overtime. And so this would be, hey, you're now balancing 10 things instead of eight. I mean, it's.
So let me understand, like, with, so for example, I worked, I wrote part of the grant for the arena with Ron. Would we be, I, I'm a little, I don't know that council should be getting grants awards. Like, even though I've pursued some grants and helped write some grants, I'm like, that would seem like a conflict of interest. But then Ron, we do realize, so is Ron eligible for these awards? No, he's paid for his, he's paid as a consultant.
Correct.
Consultant fee. So a lot of times, it's Ron, me, and Heath. Or so like Heath could tag in somehow, divide it up.
I think that said, what if you're sitting beside him?
This, that's where it's gonna be a little bit of a challenge. But in the end, usually there's somebody that, hey, who's the one responsible?
The point person, yeah.
Look, what we do when we're writing grants is we have indicators of who, percent effort in that. And so it's like, it could be predetermined ahead of time to say, you're the principal on this, you're the second. And from a percentage, you could say, I'm 80, I'm 20, or I'm 80, I'm 10, I'm 10.
And then there needs to be an assessment at the end, who really delivered.
Yeah, those are the pre, and then the post, and then it's like, at the end, it shifted. So we juggle it that way, or that's one way of juggling, I should say.
Okay. And we kind of alluded to that and said that it might be split, but it's a little bit vague. Team efforts right there, that we might be able to have. Maybe it's divided or it's duplicated, and that's, we threw in, it's just up to me to figure that out. But using a percentage, that's a good methodology.
If this is to become policy, I'd almost prefer a statement that says, mayor, council, city administrator are not eligible. You just don't know it down the road. Not us, somebody else might say, hey, it's not in there.
I, when thinking about the, sort of the perverse incentive notion, if the potential trade-off is someone would not engage in the same quality of their work to pursue others, isn't there like an annual review of performance? And so it's like, if there was a, like, we have incentives. I've been in structures where you can only get an incentive if you're meeting the standards of your job. And so it's like, you would have to still perform at a certain level. And so that could be like one check, just to make sure there isn't too much of a shift away from your tasks. And I'm with Jake, I think. I'm excited about it. I'm okay as well with bullet point two, where it's an additional service given to the city. So I'm okay with that.
You know, like the meter grant that the state was doing for all the communities, that was a massive award. I guess for me to feel totally comfortable with this, I would love to see kind of like a case study, like, okay, in this instance, this is how it could have, it could have played out. I'd like to see a case study.
Yeah, sure.
Before we.
That makes sense.
You know, like, here's a past award, and here's who would have qualified, and this would have been the points and the percentages of participation and leadership or follow-through on the, you know, there's, like Adam said, there's a lot of follow-up work on these grants. There's a lot to initially put them together and find them and write them, but then someone has to administer them on the backend, and then.
That's wise.
So I'd love to see some examples.
Like an application of the scoring mechanism.
Yeah. And I think with donations, yes, I like the clarification. Like if someone just is, it's a business saying, hey, I want to give the city something, well, I think it should be, it's like a sales job. If someone engaged and created a relationship and solicited a donation, a solicitation for a donation to the city is one thing versus just take, picking up the phone because someone called.
Yeah, 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 being the one to receive it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Being the one to receive it.
Expending effort.
Well, and the five hundred dollar limit, you know, that's gonna, that's gonna limit out, hey, they dropped off lunch for the whole department. It's awesome. You, you know what I mean? I take the cops to lunch every once in a while. Like, that's certainly not gonna fit in that realm. It's gotta be over five hundred. And so it'll be, but I think of Lupus who, you know, gives a Yeti cooler or.
Yeah, and that couple up on the east bench in Canterbury, they gave a ton of stuff at the last awards gala, too. I forget their name. He's the integrative health physician.
I'll put some parameters on the donation idea, so. This is good feedback. Yep.
Thanks, Adam.
This, uh, next one is just, this is pretty high level. So we have a policy right now that says if you have certain certifications, this is a similar concept of if you go beyond those certifications and you get whatever, you have to have a certification A for your job. But there's also certifications B, C, and D, and you have to take a test and you become more qualified. You get more experience. And so we've had some requests where employees are saying, hey, what about this? We have somebody in a finance department that is interested in, in getting a certification. And asked and said, can that receive an incentive pay? It's called a differential pay. And the dollar amounts on these are pretty minor. It's, it's, it would be like twenty-five bucks a month. And so, yeah, I went and did this. Most of them have recurring types of requirements. You have to get some CEUs every year to maintain it. So I, as I've worked with the department heads, I ended up putting together, this is just a form that we would go through asking the employee to document, hey, how much is, is this gonna cost the city? What is, what value does it bring to the city? Are there recurring costs such as training or you gotta go to a conference? And that might incur then a hotel stay and a travel allowance. And, uh, so really just asking, uh, for a lot more information and kinda putting the onus back on the employee to say justify why this is needed through this form, uh, be, besides just asking a supervisor and seeing if it sticks. I did have the comment from one of our department heads that said, I feel like I'm filling out an IRS form. But my, my response to that was, we have a duty as employees to make sure that, that this is something that if we are gonna add a cost, that it benefits the city and that it's justified to the public. And so, um, anyway, just wanted to bounce that form off of you in general. Any concerns with that? After hearing that general overview.
Yeah, I've heard from employees over the years saying, hey, if I get these elevated certifications and skills and qualifications, I should, I would like to have some little bump for, for achieving those. And I think that's a great balance which you brought up of, okay, what's the return on investment for the city? And did we pay for a lot? Is there like a cost to the city to even get you there versus, you know, again, that initiative taking, the value that it brings to their position? How much should we have to, to put together for them to even get to do it? If it was significant, then, I don't know that, I mean, how would the council feel if we had to spend a thousand bucks so someone goes to a conference and gets in the hours for certification and they're like, okay, now I want twenty-five dollars a month more, but we put in the thou- you know? Those are some interesting caveats to weigh.
Yeah, this doesn't mean that we would approve it. This is just an avenue to evaluate it. So if you're okay with this, but it does open the door for some to be approved. Beyond what we already have. We probably have a couple dozen that are listed specifically already in our policy manual. Building certifications for different level inspectors. Um, there's a bunch of public works certifications for sewer and water, um, for stormwater. And so some of those guys have cross-trained where, hey, I'm in the water department, but I also got my wastewater certification. And so they get a differential pay of whatever it is, fifteen or twenty bucks a month because of that certification. But then it benefits us because we can call on those guys to go do these different things. Anyway, you, you okay with that?
Education and encourages training. I'm always good for that.
Okay, that's it. Thank you very much. I'll bring back some final suggestions on a future meeting, so.
Can we do a motion to adjourn without Van?
Yeah, how do we do that?
Maybe gotta do it in another language or something. You sounded like you were almost asleep.
It's because I have to get up at three forty-five in the morning.
Okay, all right. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
I have to pick up Haley from a trip from Hawaii and it comes in at like five horrible something in the morning.